With us only allocating the twenty percent, which is, when you look here is one hundred and fifty-six thousand. You know, it sounds like a lot, but we also have administrative costs, so we're still having to pay Brandy, or not Brandy, excuse me, Mary Bass. Out of that, and then her part-time drivers, which she has six, seven at any time. So with that being said, I would highly encourage if our goal here is to just make sure these people keep getting the meal, let's just keep it to the people that we have currently on, um, the program, and then continue to look at it thereafter. But there is that other fifty percent, you know, that we still have that we can use at our discretion, and I'm sure Diane will, you know, if, if, if more needs to be allocated to the food, I'm sure we'll figure it out a long way.
Thank you.
Okay, Martha, before we go to number ten, I think Mr. Burkey's here. And, uh, I think he's the most expensive paid one in the room, so let's get into it. Time to go home now. Can't get better than that.
I think you've left here.
Mr. Burkey, we were just talking, we had the, the journal entry, uh, number seven.
Right, yeah, I have.
Where the attorneys are withdrawing their petition for annexation on the other one on, uh, Niles Town Road.
That's the seven, Seven Acres on.
Yes.
And you're aware of which one that is, that's the three or four-story, um, story area.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, they, it was, the, the county engineer nailed it, but it was just ter- terribly inadequate, uh, petition.
They didn't even use an attorney.
Right, right, well, I actually went out to their, to the site location, met with the construction people and finally got names, and there's now a guy named Sharnacki who's gonna be the attorney on this. So anyway, you're gonna withdraw that, uh, tomorrow.
And then they will?
They're gonna refile that as a tier-two annexation. That's a very time-intensive, you know, they're, it's longer than the one we're gonna talk about that's gonna be this, uh, you know, that's gonna be refiled here on Niles, Allen, and Holland. But, very time-intensive, I've been working with the clerk, and we're gonna have more conversations because it's gotta be done right, and it's gotta be, you know, th- there's very little, uh, room for error. So, but that's something that's kinda come down the path and I'll talk with Sharnacki and, and get an idea of when he's gonna file it, have him resubmit, submit the paperwork in advance, make sure the paperwork's correct, and for your pur- purposes, and then go on.
Why, why a type-two annexation?
I don't know.
Okay.
They just, they, they have to have some agreement with the city of Warren to, to kind of initiate that.
Okay.
But, the people I talked to.
We've only done a few of those in my time here, I know that, that's kind of common. Um, and I know it is a little bit more.
It's, it's just that it's so time and, yes. Niles Van is gonna reappear, but I wanna really make sure that, uh, everybody's comfortable, you don't have, the tr- the commissioners don't have any real discretion. They file it, uh, they're gonna file it Thursday, I think. And, uh, I wanna make sure again that the paperwork is, is correct for our purposes, and, uh.
When you say the commissioners have no discretion, if two commissioners were to vote against it, what would happen?
Uh.
I, I just wanna be clear.
Oh, well, what, what could happen is that the petitioners will then file a mandamus action, require you to make the right decision.
Gotcha.
So, so there is a remedy for them to make it, so.
I'm not saying I'm, I guess, I just playing devil's advocate here, there are two.
Yeah, I know, it did. You know, it's, when, when somebody comes up and says you will be, you know, I, I get that with my wife too much.
Me too.
So.
Funny idea for you.
I just want, I, I just want you to be, you know, aware of and comfortable with the fact that it's gonna, you know, the only remedy is.
So I think that's important.
Silence, no, or yes, and the, the statute says, the, uh, if I can grab this real quickly, I, well, I sent an email to you, and I outlined it, uh, the exact wording.
But I think that's important to be known, because we don't want, th- there's already been a lot of misinformation regarding this from the beginning, and I think it's important that it's known that the commissioners have zero discretion when it comes to this, we have to grant this.
Yeah, and more importantly, probably, i- is that this comes from the long negotiation that took place.
Right.
When, when the, just the usual annexation was pending, and this is, this referred to in the annexation agreement that was entered into between Niles, Holland, and.
Right.
This, it's all, everybody's in agreement, so you're just putting a blessing to it. So, if there are no questions, I won't be here tomorrow unless you want me here, but we're gonna work forward with the, uh, the, uh, annex, the, the, on Thursday with the annexation, the new petition. The tier-one, it's called a tier-one annexation.
And that'll be in the agenda for next Wednesday, then?
Next Wednesday, yeah, assuming they, they file it. Uh, and by the way, Mills Johnson, who's the, uh, agent, the attorney for the petitioners, or he's the petitioner also, has been kind enough to send me the documents in advance, so I can look it over and make sure that they're inclusive of everything. Needs to be on record, so, so, thank you.
Oh, you're fifteen minutes filled up.
Very good.
One billable hour. Have a good day. Okay, number ten. Amend the journal actions on the dates as listed, taken by the four Tormal County Commissioners with regards to authorizing expenditures to the American Rescue Plan Funds. Amendments are necessary to correct the fund numbers for each project listed. Niles Historical, Harried Upton Taylor, United Way, Johnson Township, Healthy Hearts and Paws, and ODOT the Virgin Diamond. This is for you, Martha, or?
Um, yeah, this was, this was Sarah.
For Sarah.
They just, uh, I don't wanna speak first once it comes in, but I, she did make me aware that they just needed to change the fund number. It was, it's a simple, I hate to say it's simple, nothing's simple here, but the fund number needed to be changed.
Okay. It was probably something upon consultation of the attorneys, I'm sure.
I'm, I would, I'd be willing to bet, and then also she is making sure that we're compliant with everything. I know that she had a certain date that we had to have, um, information in to, uh, the, you know, federal government, so I'm sure it's something either from them or from Tanya, I would, I would assume, so.
And it doesn't change the fact that it's ARPA funds, they're just changing the fund number.
Correct, right, it's just, that's correct.
It's a big thing in the, and I don't, I have no idea, 'cause I didn't know about this, so, I don't know what's the problem.
There she is.
Come on.
Oh, boy.
I tried, Sarah, I tried to do my best, let's see if I told the truth, we'll find out.
This is Sarah Taylor, Towns Table Clerk. That's a simple, it was just a simple typo, it was just the wrong appropriation used. That is an ARPA fund, it was just the wrong line item, so it just had to be corrected. Those are, what we're doing is, is putting that in the proper place, those are typically grants, grants to other communities and municipalities. That's what we're doing, so we needed to put it in the correct line item, so that's all, not, not a big deal. Just had to fix it, and I did them correctly right out of the gate.
Very good.
That's important, that one.
Okay, number eleven, authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Tormal County Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for Yoho Action Septic Tank and Supply, uh, for one HSTS replacement fund, uh, replacement being funded through PY twenty-twenty-two, PY twenty-twenty-three, Home Sewage Treatment Reserve Program, principal forgiveness. And I think, is this the same ones we talked about last week, or these additional ones? I think these are additional ones. We did a Yoho and we did a, uh?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, these are the notes to proceed for the ones that you awarded last, last week.
Okay.
So last, last, last week, um, you awarded two projects based on looks, and this for the Home Sewage Treatment, uh, Septic, Home Sewage Treatment System Reserve Program, uh, replaced existing septics for low-income families. This is the notice to proceed for those two, uh, awards.
Yeah.
Just that, eleven and twelve.
Number twelve is a notice to proceed for Proscape Landscape Contractors, Peckleach Roadless Farmington, for one HSTS replacement being funded through the Home Sewage Treatment Reserve Program also. So we approved them, and now we're telling them, go ahead and go to work.
Yes.
Okay. Number thirteen, uh, authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Tormal County Commissioners, submit application to execute contracts to the Ohio Public Works Commission in regards to the year twenty-twenty-four, Ohio Public Works Commission's funds for Everett Hall, Warren Meadville Road, Brookfield Avenue improvements for the Tormal County Engineers Department, and authorize Denny Malloy to act as Chief Executive Officer, Martha Yoder, Chief Financial Officer, and Randy Smith, Project Manager. This action for a recommendation of the county engineer. Um, the cost is one point two nine three, one oh five, and it'll consist of Everett Hall Road, Warren Meadville Road, Durst Colbrook Road, and Brookfield Avenue. And Martha, is this something common, this is the first time I've done one of those?
Yeah, yeah, this is, um, I, I mean, obviously OPWC loan for one point two, they're gonna be, um, you know, uh, ta- taking on these different projects, it's, it's pretty standard, there's no general fund used, it's all funds out of, um, you know, Randy Smith's budget, or, I should say, grant funds, and, uh, his local share.
It's good to see Everett Hall's right in front of the fairgrounds, so that's another improvement.
Oh, yeah.
For people to get in and out of the fairgrounds, for the residents that live on that street. I'm getting a little rewarded for having the, the road tore up from the traffic. And Warren Meadville Road is there also right around the, uh, the lake, Imagination Station area, so that's another good one for where a lot of tourists will go. And number fourteen, uh, authorize Denny Malloy to submit application, execute contracts for OPWC in regards to twenty-twenty-four county project known as Larchmont Avenue Resurfacing, and authorize me, Martha, and Randy as officers in that, and this is, uh, project cost nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, OPWC money, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and federal STBG money, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and it's located in Howland, Buzetta Township, begins at Warren City Limit to proceed north of State Route eighty-two on Larchmont. Okay, then, number fifteen, grant permission to Tormal County Engineer to perform the work listed during the period beginning January one to December twenty-four, provided under section fifty-five forty-three nineteen of Ohio Revised Code. And, there's a laundry list, basically, it looks like of everything the county engineer does in a given year, their duties, we have to approve the duties?
On every year.
Standard, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a yearly thing.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of it has to do with conferences and normal, everyday, you know, maintenance that they have to do, but, um, nothing's changed from last year, has it, Lisa? Nothing's been added.
And this is all spelled out in the revised code, apparently.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Number sixteen, so adopt the resolution, authorize expenditure for responding to mitigating the public health emergency ARP funds, Champion Township, and this is for a generator for the Champion Police Department and Township Admin Building. We approved it, this is the wording then, to allow us to go forth and do it, and then, number... They're just all under one this time, we don't have one or anything?
No, number, number seventeen is the agreement.
Okay.
Is it on the other side of that?
No, it's the bottom.
It's the bottom. Gotcha. Okay, number seventeen then is entered in agreement with Trin- uh, Tormal County Commissioners and Champion Township, approved by our attorneys for the Township to purchase a generator for Champion Township Police Department to ensure continued operation of safety services and admin services during power outages. Only ten thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
And that, that's it on the agenda, pretty simple, um.
Chairman, I do have one thing real quick, some housekeeping, uh, I, I was contacted, I think we were emailed by Mr. John Eli from Veterans Outreach again, uh, they have moved into their new building, um, and, uh, as you know, Veterans Outreach helps literally hundreds and hundreds of veterans every year, and those windows that they requested, um, I've been in the building, and the windows that they requested is even more important now that they're moved in, because it's freezing, they're old, or, th- they really do need them, so, I know we, we moved that to the, to the, to the, um, yes column, did we not, Audrey Yoder, I believe?
I'm checking really quick, hold on. I think that you're correct, I'm only making sure.
Anyway, anyway, he inquired, uh, with an additional ask of fifteen thousand dollars for the facade windows, because the, he, he was talking about the in- the windows on the sides of the building and on the, on the back, but on the front, there's a large facade, two facade windows there, uh, and he's asking, um, he didn't inquire about those before, but he's asking about those to be added to the ask, I think it's another.
We do have that on, I'm sorry, with that, it's, I think that's on the maybe sheet, I'm sorry.
Okay, if we can add that other, um, even if it is on the maybe sheet, the other part of that, to the ask, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman? Um, again, I, I urge you to tour the building, uh, what they do for the veterans is, is remarkable.
And I thought, when we, the last time we brought it up and we made the distinction between who they were and other ones, I thought I seconded it up there on a Wednesday.
No, it was just, you guys just added it to me, if you guys wanted it to the yes, I will, but I, I have to, I have to be really careful about making sure that I, I get two people and I say it, so if I don't, if I don't move it, it's because I haven't gotten it. Um, if you want me to move it, I'll move it, but the other thing, and you're adding fifteen to that, that would make it, um, ninety?
Ninety, I believe.
Yes, and I, I.
I gotta check that email, but I think it's fifteen, I'm not sure.
Um, what I would like to do, if you want it on the yes, if both of you want it on the yes, I will do that, and I, that's a nod, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on, I'll second that.
Yes.
All right, what time is it, I gotta write it down, 'cause I gotta find it today, um. The other thing is, if he would update his request and email it to me, he should have.
I will, I will do that, soon, I'll ha- I'll contact him and.
But I will do that, um.
He appreciates all the consideration that the county's given him too, and he knows that, works very closely with our Veteran Service Commission too.
Right.
Impeccable audits every year, so, it's a great organization.
This is a new building in Liberty, they want to do it?
Yes, yes, it's actually the old, uh, believe it or not, it's the old Arby's, uh, uh, headquarters there in Liberty. So it's right on the border, but it's in Trumbull County, they wanna stay in Trumbull County for the duration. Great opportunity for them, they moved literally almost across the street, so, uh, but they were just running out of room.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Just wanted to.
We've got a couple things I noticed some people are here for, um, Guy, I can go to you first, it'll be good. Mahoney County.
Yes.
Um, just last week, approved joining the Valley Vision twenty.
Fifty, is that what it is?
And they, they allocated a million dollars towards that program, and as we saw in presentation before twice, um, this is to kind of pick up the things that fall through the cracks as far as what the Port Authority does, what the Chamber does, and the, the economic development things that have been overlooked before in the past. With this new partnership, um, amongst many groups, um, that's what this, this goal aims to do. Mahoney pledged a million dollars, um, I was a yes, she was a no, you were a take it under consideration. What I'd like to ask at this time, and Guy, I'll have you fill things in a little bit, I don't wanna be left behind in this with Mahoney County, these are groups that serve both of us equally, and if they're, Mahoney's paying, they get skin in the game, we don't, they'll have a board seat on this, they'll have some direction on this, um, I would like to pledge the million dollars also, and we talked with Martha about this, about where to get the money from, but I'll do a little different than, maybe something a little more, uh, palatable for you, is, if we can pledge five hundred thousand dollars now, and then revisit this in six months and evaluate the progress they've made, the board they put together, what areas they're concentrating on, and then we can reallocate the, the second five hundred thousand at that time. So it gives an out that, we can put more money in now, we're in the game, they can move forward with us as an equal partner with Mahoney County, and with all the other entities, um, for the first half of the year, and if they perform and they show that this is a good economic investment, then we will reward them with the second half of the money. If there's a hangup, if they're not where it is, we can delay the money that time, we can withdraw the second commitment, um, it gives at least a testing ground of here, we'll give you a little bit, let's see what you can do, and, and show us the progress, and show us where this money is going, and how it affects us differently than, than the money you already get to do what you already do. And, and I think that is a fair ask to do that, I, I, I don't know if they would consider that or not, but I would, uh, yeah, that's what I'd like to propose at this time, when we do that.
I, I think it's a, a great idea, uh, first of all, um, you know, I think that everything they touch on and, and what they talked about in their proposal is, uh, exceptionally important, especially when it comes to workforce development and, and everything that goes into that, and, um, you know, modernizing our housing strategy for, for different groups that we're trying to get in here to, to, 'cause, let's face it, at the end of the day, we, we're not gonna have enough jo- we're not gonna have enough people to fill some of these jobs that we have coming in. Um, and, and, and finding people to work is, is difficult in this day and age, so, this is, this is, um, something that's proactive rather than reactive. It's investing in our community, uh, I've taken a long, hard look at it, I've talked to, uh, business leaders and, um, other government officials, I talked, I just, today, talked to Jim Turner, uh, and he thinks it's a great idea. Um, so, so I think that caveat, though, of having the, the five hundred thousand dollars now, reviewing it in six months, say, down the line, uh, seeing what the, what the developments are, seeing what the progress is, and then, you know, making the determination on the other five hundred thousand is doing our due diligence as a board too, so, um.
You know, and, and we're betting on ourselves, we're betting on our own money, and if we can't trust the entities that are involved there, we're doomed anyways in the valley.
I agree.
As a society.
Of course.
If, if they fail, we fail.
Of course.
So we need to give them every tool to succeed, um, because this isn't like an outside group that we're saying, hey, let's, let's partner up with these guys, we never tried them before, I mean, this is our Port Authority, our Chamber of Commerce, our, our foundations in the valley that are the backbone of finance, especially for nonprofits, and, and to involve some of those groups, they are gonna find things like healthcare coverage, things like that maybe, or daycare, or who knows what things they're, they're gonna be able to seal up, uh, to make things better for economic growth here, or make the valley more attractive.
Absolutely.
Um, that's, that's what I'm hoping that they do. Guy, do you have something to add?
Let me just, let me just add that, I think we get, um, and I thought, you know, Commissioner Ditzler did a good job of explaining it too, we get, we get bogged down, and rightfully so, in everyday budgets, and, you know, trying to, uh, fund departments and provide efficient services, but this is a way for us to look ahead past that, and, and we're able to do that because of the financial planning that we've done, and we've been fiscally responsible, now's the time to take some of that money that we've been able to save and reinvest it into the community, and I think that that, uh, is something that we haven't done in Trumbull County. We've been very fiscally responsible, but we've not been as, as foresighted as we can be, and I think this is an opportunity for us to do that, and to really look for the future, look for development, look for job, uh, creation, intention, and to, especially that housing piece is, is, is very key, because there's, there's a lot that's gonna be happening, uh, in the valley, and we're gonna be bringing in new jobs and new, uh, individuals from all over, hopefully, to, to fill some of those jobs as well as the people here. They're gonna be looking for, um, the right type of housing, you know, I mean, when we talk about even Alti themselves, you know, with, with a, with a, with a predominantly Asian culture, you know, coming here, and, and as Beth knows, uh, wh- what they expect out of the valley, uh, we have to be ready to meet those needs when, when, uh, people from different countries or, or different parts of the country come here, and expect a progressive, uh, thriving county, city, uh, establishment here in Trumbull County, so. I, I think it's a win-win, I really do, we're in a position where we can do this financially right now, and that's, 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 that's been a, a task in and of itself, but I think that, uh, as Commissioner Malloy said, we need to start betting on ourselves, and we need to start reinvesting in the community, not just in our departments, but, but in the business community, uh, and in the job creation community.
And we don't have too many opportunities to partner up as a valley, there's like an imaginary wall between us and Mahoney County.
Yes.
And when people look at this part of the country, they see Youngstown.
Yep.
And, you know, we're part of the greater Youngstown area, but at the same time, a lot of the stuff we do, a lot of stuff the Port does, a lot of stuff Chamber does is valley-related, and equally, as you mentioned, Alti, they may work there, but they may live in North Jackson, or they may work in Mahoney County, North Jackson, they may live in Cortland. Um, we, we, we gotta break those barriers down, and if we can move forward as a region, then we're a stronger team if we have more assets on the team, more money on the team, more investment on the team moving forward, and not just be our entity versus everybody.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I like that concept there of moving forward as a valley, and, and that tightening the bonds there a little bit.
Mr. Coviallo, would that, would we still have a seat on the board, because that is very important to this board, that we have a say-so in that, obviously. That's, that's my key question.
Yes, Commissioner, I, I think that, well, I would certainly support what you're proposing here, and I'm very confident that all of our partners would also agree with your approach to doing this. One, the prudent one, um, and you would have a seat on that committee, uh, to pull off that imaginary wall between the county, Tormal County Commissioner, Mahoney County Commissioner, sharing, uh, big difference in how we move forward. Um, this is a, as you mentioned, Mr. A proactive approach to what we're doing, um, we work very well with Trumbull County, Nick and his team on being reactive to opportunities. Those opportunities are gonna dry up if we don't get proactive in terms of expanding the population and the workforce, expanding the housing, expanding the available space for commercial and industrial development. This allows us to get proactive, there's also vibrant industries, and narrowly confined to working in vibrant industries and other industries, logistics, arts, culture, tourism, you name it, or apply to staying lovely. Um, I think I told the Mahoney County Commissioners last week, you know, share with you guys, this is a difficult decision because expanding a community's economy and improving a community's quality of life won't happen within the context. Lots of milestones that you guys will get to celebrate soon. Biggest successes will ha- will, will be there for your successors to take credit for. Same thing applies to, to me and my, and, and partners, we're likely not gonna be here when the fruits of what we've done are really celebrated, but none of us are thinking about, that all of us are thinking about doing everything for the, for the community's future. Um, the, the one request that I would have, and it's not by any of the deal breakers, but, um, to help us, is if, as you allocate this in two bunches, that it be an opt-out, so that whether, whatever the timeframe that you pick, you have to vote to not by the second.
Of course.
Round, and the reason for that is, um, having that commitment upfront, we do have some, our, our eyes set on some matching dollars from both state and federal profit sources, and I think applications.
Understood.
If, if, if they deliver, you can opt out of it, and you, you, you can back me for a second.
Understood, yeah.
And now to the piggy bank. What are you, what are you taking out of?
There's a, there's a contingency fund that we had within, actually within the twenty-three budget, that has enough funds to do it. So, um, I can, I'll need to sit down with Christie for the actual numbers and all of that, but there's a million dollars there.
Okay. So we, we, if we only need five hundred of it now, we can have that set there and?
That's fine, we can roll it on earth for next year, we can carry it over.
Okay, and Lisa, I know, um, we have a policy about getting these on the agenda the Thursday before with two commissioners, can we get this on for tomorrow?
Sure.
We get the, the wording?
Would need the language.
Yeah, and I'll get fund numbers for you.
Okay.
I'll have.
If, if need be, I don't wanna rush it if we're going through something, need be, it can be next week, correct?
Right.
I mean, we're not.
I just, I, they just did their press release in Mahoney, I'd like to be.
Agreed.
Fresh with that, and it's something where we could do a joint thing too, where we can officially stand together, I guess, and.
Sure.
I just need the language.
Yeah, she just needs to know legally what she can put on there, what, I don't wanna put her under the gun.
Sure, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else or anything before we get to construction, as you was, yes, next?
Uh, the Plenary Commission has three members that are expiring December thirty. The Plenary Commission has three members that are expiring, yeah. Nick Coggin, Charles, and the Plenary Commission, sorry. We have three commission members that will be expiring December thirty-first of this year, um, I do believe in September into October, we opened that up for applications for anybody else interested. Uh, I, I don't know of anybody else except the existing members that applied, we just wanted to see if and when those board members will be getting a appointed and or reappointed, um, 'cause we need to make sure that they're on our board for our January meeting.
We have two, two of those are reappointments, Mr. Coggin?
Three of them are reappointments.
Reappointments, and then Bernie Carpenter's seat is a new appointment.
And there, there's a vacation, and, and the vacation, I, that's not even the one I was talking about, I was talking about our, our three.
Oh, we could.
Members that will, that will expire at the end of the year of, uh.
But they've all put in for their reappointment, and they were the only ones who did, from my knowledge.
To my knowledge, yes.
Lisa, is that true?
Well, we did have. Well, we did have, wait, we did have people put in, we have four or five applications, or when do we announce?
The one seat.
The one that was there, but are they all the same, or do they gotta put in for each individual seat when we took the applications?
I believe those were advertised separately. We advertised for the, uh, positions that were expiring at the end of this year, and after that had closed, Mr. Carpenter had resigned from the board, and you advertised again separately for his position.
Let's, let's check that to make sure we're legal, we're correct with that.
But, uh, your, it's your recollection that the first three were advertised, and the only ones we got were the reappointments of the...
The current members that weren't reappointed, yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with those three current members.
Uh, uh, we can put those on, if, if that's the case, and we get advertised separately, we can put those on as, as soon as this week or next week, if that's okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay.
That's fine.
I can agree with that. And then we have enough, I guess, if we're gonna make a nomination for the other one, we have applications, and that is closed.
Right. But in the meantime, you guys will have a quorum, you guys will have enough to have a quorum.
We'll have a quorum next Tuesday, yes. As of, in, if they're not reappointed before January, January, we will not have a quorum.
But that's why, that's why it's important we, we appoint the three reappointed.
Correct, at this, this month, at least.
Thank you.
Uh, for Michael, Trumbull County Tourism, I just wanted to make the Commissioners aware that there is a meeting about Mosquito Lake. So, we, as a community, have just found out that there's an invasive species issue at Mosquito Lake. There is a local government roundtable that's gonna be at the Trumbull County Ag Center at 6 o'clock this Wednesday. Um, Portland has taken the lead on making invitations and sending those out, and I know that they reached out to about 50 people. But I wanted to let you be aware, most likely out of this group, I was just in the meeting yesterday, will be making a request for funding from Trumbull County Commissioners, um, to help with the mitigation of this invasive species, which is called Hydridilla. It's super fun to learn about. And, um, I just wanted to let you know that it is, um, most likely gonna be happening in the next couple of weeks before the end of the year.
Thank you. And that's Wednesday, the meeting?
The meeting's Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the Ag Center out in Portland.
Thank you, Beth.
Um, one other thing, when we did budget last Thursday, the, um, Fair Board was not aware
Right.
because of change in clerk that they had there, uh, they didn't get the message, but they did submit their budget, uh, to Lisa, I believe, on Friday. Um, so I'd like to make sure that that gets put in the budget for the record of, uh, with the other requests that we got.
What was the ask? Was it the usual ask, or...?
I believe so, yeah.
I think it was not.
I haven't seen it yet.
I think it was the same. I didn't see anything that looked different.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, no, okay.
Thank you.
But it'll be in the packet of everything when we get it. Anybody else have anything? Yes, sir.
Mr. Herrs, Bill Hartzell, Mahoning County Maintenance, um, I ran with a, uh, somewhat of a request from, um, the coroner. I, uh, got with Kathy, their chief investigator, and went and saw their morgue, bad shape. They have heaters heating their hospital rentals, because they have no boiler. So, um, I did some research on some walk-in coolers for a potential morgue. Um, a nice-sized cooler would be like $9,000, if that's what happened in the basement that they are looking to do. So, if we move forward, I will go with Kathy and do some more research to get more numbers together. That would be more suitable to see what would happen.
What's the capacity of the morgue that we have?
They have a walk-in, it's 10 by 10, and it'll
Hate to say that.
It holds 10, it holds 10 bodies. So, um...
The width you looked at was a little bit bigger than that?
A 12 by 20, larger.
Okay.
Which would be more suitable, but they have, according to Kathy, the person that would be up top is hard to get off. Put them on a gurney to get them. But if we're doing something for the corners in that building, then what they would need for supplies and what they need for equipment to make all that more smarter, not harder to work.
How much of a space in the basement would they need?
It's huge.
But how much would they...
Every bit of the space is where the finding containers are, and they have that.
But how much, how much of that will they need for the...
The morgue?
Yeah.
For saying? They can have what's beyond that door.
Not the hearing room part.
The, yeah, the, behind that.
Yeah.
It's all vacated. It's all, it's all, and they're moving out now, so it'll be done on the end of the month, end of the week.
That's something to consider. I know that, um, we still have service with Trumbull, but, um, be a little bit more of a self-sustaining thing, and I know the future, what the future holds sometimes. I mean, I don't wanna necessarily act on it now, but it's something to consider, I think.
Yeah, their morgue's in bad shape.
And that is something, too. I talked to your home director on Sunday, and he said he gets called a lot from the hospital to come and get a body out of there, 'cause they're out of room. And they're putting pressure on the, the funeral homes to take the burden away from, uh, the morgue, uh, so they can clear more rooms, so any more room than we have. And I would make sure that whatever we do, if we do something at the corners, that they could eventually be self-sufficient if they need to have all the bodies there on-site with them. We don't wanna get stuck where, if they were to lose what they have now, and then they only have half-capacity of the other thing, then we'd have to, you know, emergency situation there, so...
And we do have a generator there, so that's not a problem.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Um, we're checking the kilowatts on the generator, and some of the equipment that I was looking at is, you know, just 220 phase, so, um, it could be adequate.
Yeah. Well, with that, I mean, if, if we were to go in that direction, you wouldn't have any, I don't think you could have any, any other department anywhere near that building. You know, that building would be devoted to the corners.
It would be secure, yeah.
Obviously, um, something to consider.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Martha, do you have anything on the ARPA that you wanted to talk about?
I do, I have an update for you, but before I get to that, um, there's been a little bit of talk about parking
Yes.
recently, um, and I just wanted to be sure that you guys knew that. I had met with Mr. Waleski.
Okay.
Um, some of you may have noticed that we have empty parking lot out there now. Um, he gave me, and I don't wanna say it in a public meeting, uh, you know, when you're trying to do negotiations, but he did give me a figure for leasing that, those two lot, well, those two parcels, it's one lot. Um, and it was a, I'll be honest, a little high. So, I'll agree with that. Um, the, uh, and you can maybe guess that a little bit when you know that he wanted $50 a space for those that were parking there. Um, I had sort of been...
A month, a month.
Yeah. And I had been talking a little bit with Mr. Danzo about, um, and he was looking into the legality of whether the county could lease it from him and then, um, charge the employees for the spaces, because they are nicer spaces. Um, however, I also looking at, um, how many people have actually taken them up on the $50 space. So, I don't know, um, I just wanted to let you know, guys, know where I was at it. I'll see what Mr., uh, 'cause I have Mr. Danzo looking at that. I'll present that to you guys, you know, whether that's legal or not. Um, I know you've also been talking to, uh, Trumbull Family Fitness. I will say that Mr. Waleski, um, was looking at like a five-year lease.
Yeah, that was a part-time thing with Trumbull Family Fitness, so this might be, if we were to do something, this would probably be the most palatable, I would say. That's a price, but, um...
Okay, yeah.
Because that's only gonna be for a year.
And we may, we may be able to work with, with him on the price, I don't know. Um, I, like I said, I'll just see what Mr. Danzo said. He's got a few things he's researching for me, and that's one of them.
Okay.
So, I will let you know on that. Uh, with regard to the ARPA, I'm gonna send it to you, now I want to score.
I, I will say this, if we, if there's anything that we do, do with that, with those parking spaces, however it works out, if there is something that can be worked out. Um, we definitely need more handicap parking down there.
Right, and that also is part of that. Bill and I have been talking to you about, you know, we're gonna gain some parking, uh, back from the lean building. Um, and we've also, there's the idea, but all of that's kind of far out, and, and we've had this conversation that, uh, particularly for those of us who maybe stay here after dark.
Right.
It is a little, um, even where I'm parked, it can be a little bit intimidating, or so for my, my employees are a little more far in the front. Because, see, and I don't always know I'm staying, that's part of the problem. But, um, we, there's a, a portion of, uh, the, the lot that we currently own that can also be reclaimed, because it's sort of a, a double strip, I guess, right now. Where are you talking about paving over?
Oh, yes, where the Napolit Building used to be.
Yeah, and...
There's still gravel, so...
There's gravel, and so we can maybe make, uh, more of what we already have, too. And so we're still working on it, but I just kinda wanna...
But that, that only thi, that doesn't solve the handicap issue.
You're right, you're right.
That's the only thing that I'm, I'm very concerned, I, I think we're gonna have more parking. I know we're gonna have more parking, but the handicap issue.
I agree with you on that. And I think, I, I think...
Maybe we can talk about that with Mr. Waleski.
Yeah.
Just that. Good thought.
Okay. Um, so for the ARPA, I, it's been almost a month since I updated you thoroughly, so I wanted to give you a real thorough update, and we've had a few things happen. I did receive requests from Braceville and Howland, um, which I was requested to receive, and those have been added to the maybe spreadsheet as well as the Commissioner Drive. I received, received a request from Vazetta, which I added to the Commissioner Drive, but haven't put on any of the spreadsheets. Um, this, I assume, was to be a backup for the request that was denied for Vazetta. So, do you want me to put it in place of that on the yes sheet, or do you want me to just add it to the yes sheet? I don't know. Or do you want me to just, or you guys just wanna look at it?
Which one's that? The Vazetta one?
Vazetta ambulance.
Vazetta ambulance was denied, um, no, no, the road, I'm sorry, the road was denied, um, they submitted...
And we asked them to come back with a different...
Right, and they submitted a $200,000 request for, I think, an ambulance. Um...
I mean, if that's their only request, I'm, I think...
Well, we need to just go ahead and, and, and swap those out.
Yes.
Yes.
And also, on the first one, if we got one from Braceville and Howland, I'd, what are those for? 'Cause I'd like to move those right to a yes. Also, those are the only requests from those two.
Right, hold on. Those I put on the maybe, so hold on, let me find those, and I'll tell you what they are. All right, Braceville's a $175,000 ambulance. Allen's is, uh, $62,750 for the Bolondale Food Penitentiary improvement.
I'm fine with those.
I'd like to move both of those to yeses, 'cause those are the only ones that the townships have.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Okay. Um, so you want me to move that to the yes, the, the Zeta to the yes to replace?
Correct.
All right. Um, there was a letter of support from Representative Ziantucci for the McDonald Village Water Tower project currently on the maybe list, and I added that to the folder for the Commissioner Drive, on the Commissioner Drive. Um, when I was reviewing a fiscal officer certificate, I noted that, uh, the approval for the modification for the BOE Roof Engineering from Philip Seketic referenced a fund that wasn't an ARPA fund. This kinda puzzled me, because I had the engineering costs put on the allocated spreadsheet as part of the proj, total project cost. So, I went back to the original journal entry for approval of the engineering expenses. This was done April of '22, prior to the actual application for the project of $526,22, and that's, I guess, I assume, and actually talking to Mike, um, that's why the non-ARPA funds were approved. So, because the engineering portion of the project was awarded prior to the application, the journal entry designated another fund to be utilized, and it was utilized. So, I removed the total amount of the engineering cost, which is $36,250, from the allocated promise sheet. So, it gave us a little bit more there. And so the new amount is $558,459. Um, the roof stacks on the BOE project, um, have been completed, uh, have been completed at a reduced cost that was, um, that, than was anticipated, because some of the work was done by the hard staff. It came in at $23,399 rather than $25,115. Um, so I made the above changes to your allocated promise spreadsheet, along with updating what's actually been spent and what's been encumbered. And the amount of money that has not been promised or allocated out of the total of the ARPA funds is $9,653,044.86. Commissioners had me add the Brookfield project to the yes list in last week's meeting, so that's reflected on the yes sheet. The following projects on the yes spreadsheet were approved by legal counsel. The City of Nile's valve replacement for $60,000. The Vianna Township Mark's radios for $26,789, $26,789. The Champion Township Police Generator for $10,225, which is already on the agenda for the agreement and the resolution, and, um, the Downbeat Musical Arts for $30,000. Um, and of course, the next step, which already, has already been done for Ch, or is already being done for Champion, is the agreements and the resolution. Mr. Masaki has become requesting this from Attorney Rogers. Did you have anything more on that?
No, just wait, I'm waiting.
Oh, just waiting, all right. The county engineer request for $536,972 for roads was approved as revenue loss if it is generally operated county program. And that's currently on the maybe spreadsheet. I don't know if you just wanna leave it there for now, until you guys go back to that. Um, the important thing on that is to make sure, and I'm pretty certain that they are, but make sure that everything on that project are county vote. Um, there's been a lot of, we talked a little bit about revenue loss before and the confusion. It has to be county revenue loss in order for it to be revenue loss, okay? Uh, which is why it's okay for counties on the revenue loss to use the roads for the, you know, to pay for roads for counties
County roads, but not the other.
on the revenue loss, but not for the township, because that's why, why that, where that confusion is. Uh, the following requests on the yes sheet were denied by legal counsel.
Can I, can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
When they are denied, how are we notifying them? Or are we notifying them?
Um, I, we, we have, I've been saying it here.
Okay.
Um, I can certainly go back, and I think the, the last ones that were denied, I did notify, like Farmington and
Okay.
But I will notify, um, uh, the, uh, some of the other ones that were denied. You guys have had me whole places forward, we've reached out to them, and things like that.
If we can do that, that'd be...
Sure, I, I'll be, I'll be happy to do it.
Yeah.
All right, um, but on the, on the denial, so the...
I can't believe that Hubbard Salt Dome was denied.
The Hubbard Salt Dome for $210,000 was denied. The Vianna Historical Society Cemetery Restoration for $60,000 was denied. And the Leveitsburg Historical Society Train Station Gallery for $182,1 was denied. Um, so I zeroed all of these out. They're still on the yes sheet, but I've zeroed them out. That's how I've been handling all the no's. Um, Hubbard, though, has a second priority request for $125,000 for the ADA-compliant restroom system in the administration building. Do you want me to move that from the maybe to the yes spreadsheet then?
No, yes, that would be their only ask then, right? Because the other one's denied.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Um, the other thing, just to note, is that, uh, Vianna Historical Society, that was their second request. So, they did receive $60,000 for the Copper Penny Building, or are receiving $60,000 for the Copper Penny Building. So, I mean, it's, I'm sorry that they've been denied on this one. But they've already, they've been, that's, but that was the second, so it was, right, correct?
And she, and she put in her...
So, this is an additional $60,000 there, four hours.
She put in her letter that for what they were, $120 was too much in lost revenue due to COVID, so that's why they approved the first $60,000, not the second $60,000.
Right, and I, I don't get to see that, 'cause it's a privilege, but yeah.
So, that's why that one was denied, 'cause they felt that that was more loss than what was due to COVID-related stuff.
I see.
Based on what they've spent money before in the past.
Okay.
All right, now, uh, when I get to these last ones...
The train station, I don't understand, I don't know, but again, then we need to reach out to Warren Township again.
Right.
And see if they have a replacement, because that was, uh, Warren Township.
Well, that's their, their historical society, right? Is that their...
Well, there's, yeah, there's a, yeah, that's, you know...
Downtown Leveitsburg area.
Right, that's, Leveitsburg is within the township, yeah.
But I mean, that's not the...
I can do that, um, I can do that. Right. Um, I thought that I already had. I'll look, I can...
They may have, Le, Warren Township may have something for their Johnson Community Center?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
You did, right, and that was...
I think we did. I think historical society, something.
With something separate.
Something separate, I don't know.
Although it had support of the Trumpes.
Well, yeah.
Um, yeah, they, they have the Johnson Community Centers improvements for $67,450. That's waiting to be, to go to legal counsel. So, rather than reach out for something else, do we wanna just wait and see what happens with that?
Let's wait and see. If that gets approved, then we'll know, uh, more of a, a fair number for them to be able to request.
So, I'm gonna get to the numbers now, the, the new numbers, which are now a little bit expired because some of the things that we've dealt with already today. But I will give you what they were coming into the meeting. With zeroing out the den, this, and this one is correct. With zeroing out the details, uh, I'm, no, sorry, this is the incorrect one. With zeroing out the denials and the addition of the Brookfield project, the total on the yes sheet is $6219,088.13. This, this is the correct one, that the next one is the one that doesn't change. The total pri- The total promised allocated minus all the current, current total on the yes sheet is three million four hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. Um, I also just wanna remind you that the Ween Building demolition is still listed on the allocated promise sheet at two million dollars, um, and we've not added the additional request to any of the sheets. But the attorney does have it, and we're, we need to get back on that. And the reason it's still at two million is we don't have, that we have not been requested the, uh, payment for what they've done.
Okay. All right.
Well, hopefully, we get a few more of these before the first of the year, to give us a clearer picture. Then after the first of the year, we're gonna have another meeting, and then, uh, reevaluate where we stand, and then maybe move some other stuff up to guesses, or, you know, get through all that, and then see if we're gonna open the portal again. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Alex, you got anything in HR, before we go to our final agenda?
Um, do I have to say my name again, since you just said it?
I haven't been saying my name, because he keeps calling on me, so I just.
Alexandra Devene Jones, people of Human Resources Department, um, only because I will not be here tomorrow, which I told you, Commissioners. Um, on number six, which is John, but I do just wanna note this, for the record, because I know people listen after the fact. This specific supervisor has to have a certain college education. I'm sorry, John, I just wanted to make note of that. So, all of his supervisors have to have a certain education, of course, but specifically, when you're dealing with adult protective services, there is Ohio Vice Code that they have to have a specific type of degree, which is why they're probably with only two applicants, because their li- their pool is very limited internally of, of who has that degree. Just so you, Commissioners, are aware.
That's a good clarification.
Yes, I think it's gonna be very important come tomorrow, if there's questions about who, what, when, or why, how, they have to have a degree in gerontology, or there's one other degree that they can have, but it's, it's specific to social services and adult aging population. Not to mention the continuing education credit that they have to have, so please just know that going into tomorrow. So I'm, I'm, I didn't mean to.
Do you have anything, please, that you're with? Oh, your, your name, though, just for the record.
Oh, my name is Anita Brogaw. I grew up here, I had the honor of living next door to retired Chief of Police John Galupic in McDonald for thirty-two years. My husband is retired from the Marines, and he's a retired. We recently moved back here because of the death of my mother. I, I have been having problems at my house. I get stonewalled by everybody. I have followed the chain of command, I have been to, um, every single Trumbull County. I've been to the tax department, I've been to the trust meetings, I have been to everything, and everything is hidden from me, I'm not told any court dates. I, I'm having a lot of problems now, where it's, um. I have tried to find out. There's two hundred thousand dollars allocated for the cleanup of the Ohio Leatherworks in Gerard. And I have contacted the EPA, I've contacted the Trumbull County Comma- Combined District. They refuse to talk to me or tell me when any of the court dates are. And, um, I don't know how, I could see how that money was spent. Because I live across from Olford's Farm, and they dumped five hundred loads, um, dirt from the Ohio Leatherworks. I was never contacted. I have, I went to the tax office, they're still zoned, it's residential farm. I know they got paid for it. We have dead animals laying in our yard. Had, I paid fifteen thousand dollars for a new septic tank, and the, um, Trumbull County Combined District came, and I failed my inspection flooding from that. And nobody will give me any answer. And I, my granddaughter was just taken to the hospital, she's five years old, from a bacterial infection, was out in the front yard, and there was floodwaters. We have a big, big problem there. My ten-pound chihuahua died when he walked through those floodwaters. I will say, I hope my son, I wanna applaud you on what you said here. My son, Mr. Hart can verify, we both have relatives, but we lost two fine young men in two thousand and eight from this area, because there were no jobs here. My son is a supervisor for the Department of Agriculture for the state of Florida, and his relative is a very fine engineer. They couldn't find jobs here, so I applaud you on looking ahead to make this a great place again, because. And, I need to get with somebody, because it's very, very dangerous. Other summer, Roosevelt Elementary called my daughter, and she was helping us put up. Roosevelt Elementary called my daughter, her is very, very sick. Two afri children. I have told every single person that you should not have dead animals laying in your yard every day. I have vultures, and I believe that, and I've been keeping a lid on this, because it is racially motivated. As the people who are most affected, for me, it's five hundred, three to five hundred feet from my front door. My front yard gets so flooded with this floodwater. They have done it in a guise of running, uh, ramparts for late the day of film, but there are trucks in there every day from eight to four, Monday through Saturday, dumping, dumping, dumping. Who is regulating this? I called the EPA, I said, who is regulating this leachage? They put no liner there. They're bringing in, I know they're bringing in, feel when they're tearing down all these gas stations. Uh, for three years straight, there has been, um, dumping. It's, it's basically taking over for LAS over there. They're just dumping all the industrial waste there. And I know, I have seen munis- municipalities over there, too, just dumping. And it's, I just, I mean, this is three hundred feet from my front door. And the people who are most affected by it are a Filipino family who do not speak English, and who went to the Trumbull County Engineer, nothing was done. And when I'm talking floodwater, I'm talking three feet of floodwater coming down off of there. I grew up there, and we never had floodwater like that before. And it's going on residential, it's going in residential, uh, residential area. And when I have to get my, uh, septic tank, and Mr. Curl did the, um, did the, uh, efficiency test of how well your, um, I live in between two seventy-three-year-old, uh, septic tanks that overflow into my yard, and I've had my cell phone tested, and I've had raw sewage in my cell pho- in my cell wealth, in my house. I have, with, nobody will do anything. Nobody will do anything, they keep telling me that they go to court, and they're just, and I never hear anything. But now, my granddaughter had to be taken. From the bacteria, that's from putting up Halloween decorations.
Wh- where do you live, ma'am?
I live at two one seven nine Salt Springs Road, or four mile intersects with.
So you're in, which, you're in the township?
Ottersville Township.
Yeah.
Mail, McDonald mailing address.
And you've gone to your trustees for?
In May, in May, and my other, um, question is, so much gunfire by our house, and I need to know what the law is.
For townships, they're discharged firearms.
They, they ban discharged firearms, they're hunting in townships, so people can do that. And unfortunately, what you get isn't so much, I wonder if it would be hunters. What you get are people from other areas that can't shoot in the city limits where they live. So you're in a perfect area, I, I've seen all the dumping and trash in your neighborhood, and that's just an area that's kind of a little gold, a little triangle for people to disappear and go shoot a gun, they go dump trash cans, go dump their tires, you're kind of in a, a rural, rural area right outside of city, surrounded all around you. And so I would, I'd venture to say a lot of your gunfire is probably people illegally on someone else's property, just because they don't wanna get caught shooting a gun in the city, so they drive down the road.
I can't even check my mail.
I mean, I said, it is a police issue, your police department should be able, if there are people on properties where they're not allowed to be, um, but if it's your neighbors or people that are where they are, I mean, there should be state backstops, things like that, but there isn't anything that we handle or any, any law that would prohibit someone from doing that. Um, but you should work closely with the police chief there, and let him know, like, where and when, and if it is someone from outside the area, you know, they can potentially catch that person. Um, but you are kind of in a little area that is kind of forgotten about in Trumbull County, and you're not, um, I, I don't know, I, I wish Gary was here today, and I wish, um, someone from the Health Department, they're closed this week with their move, but I mean, we can definitely refer this stuff over for you and work with you. I'd be happy to help you with that.
Oh, I.
You got, right there is our biggest asset, is that guy right there, who writes for the Tribune, and if he picks up on your story a little bit, he, he's got more power in his pen than we have right here at the table, unfortunately.
I just need to know what, what is going on with Ohio Leatherworks.
Do you know anything about Ohio Leatherworks?
Yes, the Ohio Leatherworks property received a grant from the US EPA to remediate the property. Um, the, the dirt that you're referring to is actually dirt from the Trumbull Avenue sidewalk pro- uh, project that was stored on the parking lot, until it was purchased by, I believe, the, your neighbor there, and then it was moved there. The soil that's actually been removed from the Leatherworks site was certified and taken to a, uh, certified dump and clean fill that has been tested and brought into that set of numbers. So, that is going through a, a US EPA cleanup, that's been going through a certified environmental consultant. They've been checking all the trucks coming in and off the property, verifying the soils, and they're working on a no further action, that's safe, going to be considered clean, uh, here by the end of the year.
I followed those trucks, there was nobody there.
That's, the, the dirt you're referring to is, is the dirt from the Trumbull Avenue sewer, uh, waterline replacement project that was stored on the parking lot of the former Leatherworks facility.
No, not this dirt.
Yes, 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 I know, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Pictures of it.
Yeah, and the US, or the Ohio EPA had looked into it, and they spoke with the environmental consultant in the city, and, uh, the property owner, they've received the dirt, and they've considered it a closed case. It's, they've.
No parking lot, no parking lot there.
So they, they stored dirt from somewhere else.
From, yeah, they did a Trumbull Avenue waterline replacement, so they tore up the right-of-way in the sidewalk and stored dirt there, and once it was purchased, they, they removed that dirt from that there.
The dirt that's on the grass trees from our house, was dirt not from Leatherworks, but dirt that was stored in Leatherworks.
Correct, and, and none of it was from the remediation site. There's REM areas on the property that were identified by the environmental consultant, uh, and those REM areas were, were removed and taken to a certified.
I was gonna say, the remediation is complete, of the Leatherworks property.
Yeah, the, the remediation.
And has been for.
REM areas are, are all clean, all filled dirt in. Right now, they're doing site prep work, basically removing, uh, mulch and some other debris, like tires and things where people threw a dump. Um, and they're working on what's called a no further action certified through the.
When was that remediation complete?
Uh, that was earlier this year, that was.
Started twenty-one.
And that was from the, the Trumbull Avenue Waterline Replacement Project.
That many trucks coming in every day?
I, I don't know how many trucks, but I know.
Pretty much.
They, they took.
Pretty much. At least, at least ten loads a day.
What, I.
Do we have anybody from sanitary that can help us with that?
That would be the City of Gerard.
Oh, the City of Gerard.
The City of Gerard would have replaced that waterline on Trumbull Avenue, and from the time that that dirt was.
Why were the residents not notified?
Did your neighbor purchase dirt from the City of Gerard?
That was not dirt, that was a bunch of debris.
I can't speak for that, I, I don't know.
I mean, I could, I could show you a picture.
Have you talked to your neighbor?
I mean, that's basically turned into a landfill there, every day, tandem, tandem dumped of.
It's still going on?
Yeah.
That's definitely not a lot of works, the, the Trumbull Avenue Waterline.
Every day.
Soil should have been a three-day project, if not less.
Oh, it was a three-month process. I followed it every day, and sent the pictures to my son in Florida.
That'd be Health Department, then?
He is very concerned about it.
We can, we can, if you wanna stay after, we can call the Health Department. I mean, it's a separate entity, we're, we don't govern them, they have their own board, and they have their own funding, but we can certainly contact the director and get you in touch with them, and you can, so that you get through, we can call personally and have them talk to you.
Nick, do you, can you?
There is a.
Just on the side of the Commissioner's side, just pull up any paperwork you had on, when the stuff was done, where it went through, things like that.
Absolutely.
Just so she has the info, we can get to her. We'll hook her up with the Health Department, we'll maybe, we'll call Mr. Migliozzi.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure he'll take a cell phone call, and, and.
Oh, yeah.
Have him get somebody to meet with her personally, and then, um, we'll talk with Gary.
Can I describe this, tell you this? The culvert that runs off of it, feeds into the actual salt springs, the original salt springs from. The, when I followed that green dye for Richard Curl, it went all the way through, down the Nile Harbor, all the way back through, that, this was just from my septic tank. Can you imagine where all this water is running off? This water floods this Filipino family out, and they have, they have sometimes hundreds of Filipino people over there that don't speak English. These children are playing in this water. They, my own granddaughter was over there until I realized what was going on. They put their pool on this. And it's just, I feel that they're in grave danger. I, I, you just, you just don't have dead animals for no reason. My husband was in the Marines for twenty-seven years, he was a retired police officer. I know why you have dead animals.
Yeah, I see you taking notes, are you, uh, you gonna be able to hook her up anyway, or?
Yeah. That's, Bill, Bill, Bill.
Take a sample of your soil, take it to the Ohio State Branch.
I have already, and my, my son told me that it will not hold up in court because it's out of the chain of command.
Are you gonna get a testing done?
I've already had testing done.
Got the result, what, what, I'm just curious.
I ha- I have the results, I sent him the key. That's why he is telling me to come here, because he feels that.
Who's Keith?
He's, that's his mother, good friend of mine, actually, my nephew.
Oh, okay.
They live in Florida.
Uh, my son is a supervisor for the state of Florida, for the agriculture department. He is a supervisor for herbicides and pesticides.
Okay.
And when summer had to go to. Out of it, that I...
But you have had the soil tested or no?
I have.
And the results were inconclusive or...
High organic. There is, um, helium in it. Uh, like I said, they dump their day, every day, Monday through Saturday, eight to four.
And, and Nick, we don't know why they're dumping there, obviously.
I, I don't know. I can only speak to, to the, the knowledge that I have based on that, that water line project. Uh, there was, uh, it was, when the water line project was done, it was stored at the Leather Works facility. Supposed to be on the parking lot. That was taken between mobilization, demobilization, and removing all of the dirt from that water line. It was a three day project. I don't know where the other soil is coming from, but I can assure you it's definitely not from the Leather Works site.
So I have followed, I have followed the trucks and they have torn down, um, two gas stations where they bring in all that from there also too. I have pictures of that.
And I don't, I can't speak to that. I have no knowledge.
And that, yeah, that could be where petroleum and stuff comes from too, from leaking tanks over the years.
Well, what it is also too, as I said, that is the creek that runs all the way through down Niles Carver, over to Salt Springs, over to the actual, all that runoff from the road also too.
Have you talked to anyone from EPA directly?
I, I have, I have. Uh, because, uh, my neighbor next door was running an illegal, um, home improvement, home improvement for, um, nine years. And he also dumped into that culvert too. And he was burning and dumping for years. And I, I went to seeing, I went to...
Trustees?
I went everywhere and nobody will get back to me. Nobody, not one person has ever gotten back to me. And this was in May.
Have you brought it up at a trustees meeting?
Yes.
What, what's been the answer or...
No, I have nothing, I have not been contacted.
Well, we can certainly, uh, do our, do our part and get you hooked up with the health department and, and answer any questions that way. And with Trumbull Soil and Water, if you'd like as well, to get more answers in that direction.
Rodney Hedge came out.
Oh, did he?
He came out and he never contacted me again. He says that it was all up to a judge and the, you know, I, I should get an attorney. I'm going to sue them. Why am I getting sued?
If you want to sue...
I don't know. I've, I've been told to move eleven times. I have been told to get an attorney and not to bother people.
Yeah, so, so the health department has been out there, Rodney's been out there.
Yes, because I called the health department on my neighbor for dumping in that culvert. Uh, he is, he has been dumping barrels and barrels of stuff. And then the one day I said, you know, I'm going to follow all these trucks. But they, um, I'm so, I'm so grateful. My mother was a widow there for thirty three years. And I just wish she would, I had the honor of taking care of her when she was... Just wish that she would have got to see Salt Springs Road redone for the first time in like thirty years. It was beautiful. And then those trucks are just terr- they're just ruining it. It's just tandem trucks of, um, just industrial debris every day.
Well, we have to find out where they're, they're coming from, I guess, first of all, right? We don't know, we don't know where these trucks are coming from, I guess.
For three years, I, I, I watch, some days I just follow them. My granddaughter and I, we like to go follow them and see where they're coming from. They're coming from, um, gas stations that are being torn down. They were coming from the Ohio Leather Works. Um, this was not on a parking lot. This was a whole side of a, um, where the river runs beneath that bridge where the, um... I grew up in Gerard on Trumbull Avenue. So I'm well aware that the Leather Works building, I knew exactly where they were bringing that dirt from. And I have spoken to the Riveras and as I said, they are very limited in English. And so, I don't know if some of the people over there are worried that if they say something, that's a very, very dangerous situation over there. They, their whole backyard, that's three to four feet of water coming off of that, coming off of that.
But when the truck, when you told the trustees about these trucks coming to dump, what, what was their, what did they say? Did they, have they been monitoring this as well?
Uh, they closed the doors on me and spoke in, uh, private and I've never heard another thing. Then I, uh, contacted zoning several times. And she comes in my driveway and refuses to speak to me. And then I went to court, uh, with my neighbor. And I did not go in and nobody said anything. Not one person said anything. And he stood there and lied and said, I don't dump and I don't, I don't do this and I don't, and nothing was said.
Well, I, I think, um, if, if you want...
And I went to school with Mr. Ruon. And he came to my house and he's in a very si- serious situation and I've never heard another word from him.
Here's what we'll do. We'll, I mean, if you, I could come out to the property and try to get Mr. Ruon to come as well. And somebody from the health department. We could try to schedule a time, myself or, or Michelle Malloy.
That would be so powerful.
And come, come out to the property and take a look at it and see if we can get these other agencies to cooperate and do something, okay?
I mean, the flooding is so bad where I have had to get forty yards of dirt in my front yard on top of the fifteen thousand dollars that I spent for a new septic tank for failed inspection. I mean, you...
And you, how old is the septic system?
One year.
And it failed inspection?
After six months it failed because I'm getting flooded out so bad.
Why don't we do that? We'll try to get the, get all these agencies together on your property and, and see what we can come up with, okay? We'll try to do that. We'll meet afterwards and we'll talk.
The reason I have not come here is in a horrific car accident with my granddaughter. It was hit by, by a legal alien. And I had a stroke and it was, this is why, because that was, that's been the whole thing. It's been the blame on me. Well, you should have came to us sooner. You should have came, physically could not do it.
We'll try to come to you and see what we can do and evaluate what we need to evaluate, okay?
Wow, bravo. And bravo trying to get new jobs here. That is absolutely wonderful.
It's our job.
It was devastating as a mother to watch your son who graduated to become one and, and could not get a good job.
Thank you. We'll talk after. Okay. Now the elephant in the room. Uh, I guess, uh, how do we start this out again? Let's go with, uh, start off with you. Why don't you grab a seat at the table?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, no, no, no. What's that, Jimmy? You want to grab a seat now? How was the worded? Okay, I got, um, go ahead, start getting, yeah.
You want to get closer over here just for now, give you purposes and that, okay?
Grab a seat in there, just a sec. Okay, basically, uh, I get a phone call, Mr. Taylor called and he said that there were some concerns with, um, Mr. DeSalvo, DeSalvo Construction and the Building Trades regarding the, uh, bids, the qualification, request qualifications that we had for the, uh, engineers building roofs. And it was rated, or we ranked the people. We had a com- a panel that ranked the people. Dawn Incorporated came up with the, um, best bid at the time or best qualification. And there's, were a couple of little discrepancies and mistakes on the paperwork that were identified and corrected. But then there's kind of a, I don't want to say a protest, but a concern from DeSalvo in regards to what their rating was in comparison to what the other rating was. Is that pretty accurate?
Pretty good.
And so why I want to bring everyone together here is, um, Mr. Slawinski was one of the guys that rated. Uh, Mr. Coggins was another guy that was asked to rate. And basically, they were just looking at what was submitted by the companies and then following five or six questions, I believe, that you put together, Mike. Um, and, and so they can only rate on what they had in front of them. You know, it wasn't, there was no background work. There was no legwork on their panels part. It was, did they put it in paper? Did they delineate and outline what they can, can or can't do with this or have or have done with this or are, are not qualified? And in hindsight, um, when they reviewed each other's paperwork, because it's public or whatever, they can see, there's a little discrepancy between the companies as far as do they really qualify doing this? Does that really qualify? So we thought it was best bringing the parties together, the meeting, public meeting here, discuss how it went down with the rating, discuss the contention and if it's valid or not valid. And if there's a mistake, how do we correct it? How do we air, how do we air to make sure that we air on the side of what's right? And if there's a mistake, we fix the mistake. If it's not a mistake, then we move on and, and, you know, and, uh, always try to be better with everything we do in the future. Um, now, I'm not saying that there is a mistake or there isn't, but if we get everything out on the table, then at least we have the facts on the table and then we can know from there. So I guess with that, Jimmy, you want to, you want to start out with what, some of the stuff you told me on the phone?
So Jim Taylor with the West Reserve Building Trade. Um, and basically reiterating DeSalvo's concern, uh, there was a public, uh, request for qualifications that was sent out. There was six categories, uh, that were in that, uh, public notification. Um, and they were all twenty points, which would accumulate to a hundred and twenty points. Uh, the actual grading, uh, that the individuals had to use only had five, um, of the, uh, categories. And one of the categories that was in the publication but left out in their, um, bidding process was the experience in completing comparable projects for government or private clients, which I think would be weighed heavily on a project, on, on, uh, you know, this type of project. Um, so that was one. I know DeSalvo had wrote a, a letter to the, uh, to the commissioners and he CC'd me as well, um, in that. Um, so with that, it, there's also a point in there that, um, if necessary, they can have an in-person interview with these individuals as well, um, which, you know, wasn't done, but doesn't, wasn't required, you know? So the big one was that, uh, that discrepancy, um, in the public, uh, publication and actually what was actually graded. Uh, was an extra twenty points, which could have threw something either way because the total qualification points were seventy eight, uh, for DeSalvo, eighty for Dawn, and seventy for Terrari. Um, in looking in that, I did see some discrepancies, uh, in, and, and just in one of the categories in where one of the contractors had gr- graded a fifty five by one individual and a hundred by another individual, which is usually, uh, whenever there's a, a drastic amount of differences in prices or whatever, a lot of times you'll go back and you'll say, hey, hold on, did you miss something? Did you get something, whatever? Uh, with that being said, I will say that I did, um, and I don't ex- you know, didn't expect anybody to do. I did some further, uh, research on some of these jobs. Um, you know, I know Dawn graded, uh, the highest in this, uh, in this grading procedure. I did go back because I was concerned with that, with, uh, making sure that the contractors who were being graded were graded on work that they actually performed as a general contractor or a lead contractor. With that being said, I did find, uh, you know, a lot of these, uh, projects. Uh, one here, uh, was the, uh, was a project that they had in here for a ice arena roof replacement. Many of these are, uh, military-based, um, projects and, uh, and such. But Tussing Builders was actually the lead GC. So they weren't even the lead GC on this project. Um, whenever I called this, uh, Lauren Vernon, and I called all the, um, contacts in here that they had had, um, Lauren said that, that Dawn wasn't even involved, uh, that they were basically added on as a goal contractor, um, in order to get the project. There was another one here that was, um, done. The guy's name was George McCann. Uh, this was the Ohio National Garden, uh, Middletown Armory renovation. Leo Breimer was the GC. Um, you know, Dawn was just a sub, uh, of Leo Breimer. Um, I contacted every one of these. Some of these actually had information that was not even, um, that these weren't the contract specialists. And they said, well, I wasn't even here whenever that was done, um, on the project. So obviously, whether or not you're the lead GC or a sub to, you know, to gain some kind of goals is of worry, um, on any project that is being done in the county. So that's, and I, and that was just my point is just to be here to reiterate something, some of that with, um, uh, the individual. I'd reached out to Ma, I reached out to Denny as well, um, on them. Obviously, not having that extra twenty points. Um, in a, in a, and I know I, I reviewed not only Dawn, but I reviewed DeSalvo as well. And I also re- uh, reviewed, uh, Terrari. Daniel Terrari is technically, they're, they're considered a general contractor, but they don't do general contracting work. In fact, Terrari is actually doing, they do, um, abatement work. They're actually going to do the west, uh, twenty, uh, West Federal Building downtown. They're actually doing a Farmers National Bank, um, in, uh, Keenfield, uh, subbing from, uh, DeSalvo. Um, and then there was, uh, there was one other portion of that.
Main one is that, that sixth part wasn't graded? It wasn't, wasn't on their scoring sheet?
The sixth part wasn't on their, yeah.
Could have determined a different score.
Could have possibly determined that score. With that being said, um, I think after, you know, if you go into more details of the, of the, um, projects that were presented.
Well, with, with the request we had that it was for six, but then when they got the paper, it was just a five.
Yeah, it was a hundred, was what I...
I'm pissed off that you have my grading criteria. That's bullshit. Those are internal documents and he should not have been given those documents. I got a call from Joe DeSalvo that day at home, my home. I've known Joe for twenty years and he's pissed off at me because he's looking at my scoring criteria. That's bullshit. Somebody gave it out. What you are entitled to was the, the bid quoted this.
Okay.
This. But it doesn't say what Mike Slawinski scored or what Nick Coggins scored.
I just got that through an email.
You have my documents in your hand.
Got that through an email.
Yeah, that's right. Who gave them to you?
Uh, I believe the roofer.
Those documents should not have left. Those are internal county documents that we use to score. You know, legal counsel could see them, certainly the commissioners could see them, but certainly not contractors. I don't want to get a call from Joe DeSalvo again.
Is that public information?
No. This is the public information. This is the tally. This is the public information. That being said, that's my, my problem. How are you going to get people to score these? You think I'm going to be anxious to score the next one? I'm going to get calls from contractors? I work with all these gentlemen.
Yes, you do.
Right? I mean, Joe's pissed. I've known Joe for twenty years. He took it personal that I didn't score him higher. That's wrong. Okay, I got that out. The grading criteria, the, the five and six are the same question. They're baked in. It's baked into the numbers. That's my answer to that. When you look at five and six, if you could read those for me.
Yeah, I could.
They're very similar questions.
Yeah.
You know, have you worked for other municipalities? Have you worked for Trumbull County? It's a very similar question. It's baked in. So it's baked into this, this scoring criteria.
You want me, I'll read them. So the one in, the one in that, that you're probably referring to, experience with roofing design for buildings of similar size and historic nature. Okay, that's one.
Just go to five and six.
Well, no, because six is actually in there. Experiencing completing comparable projects for government or private clients, which I disagree. I believe that is different. Um, you know, you're experiencing the roofing design, yes, that is one. Experiencing completing comparable projects, I think is another one completely. Now, the ability to complete the design and construction work as described in the work above is actually on your thing. It says, ability to complete and design and construction work as described in the scope above. So that is actually in there. It's the difference between one and five. One is actually on there, experience in roofing design for buildings of similar size and historic, historic nature. The number five, which was not on... Uh, number five, which was not on there, was experience in completing comparable projects for government and private clients. So, uh, you know, I, I, I would respectfully disagree.
Moving on. If you look at, if you look at my scoring criteria, okay, and, and you have it there.
Yes, sir.
Because I know Joe had it.
Yes.
And if you look at what I had given DeSalvo, I'd given him five points for number three. Because if you look at the project approach, there is no project approach. You know, I did print the whole seventy-five pages out, but I printed out the pertinent page. And if you look at DeSalvo's criteria, description of approach, there is none. Not there. That's the most important question on there. How are you going to look at this project? This is a design build project. You know, if I go to Terrari's, he's got, he's, he's got something there. Now, if I go to Dawn's, he's got two pages. He's got two pages of specifics. Specifics. He tells me exactly what he's going to do. I saw it that way, okay? And so did the other designers.
And that's the way you graded it, on, on a three? Well, I don't know exactly what the other designers did.
Well, I'll get to that, because, because there was some, that thing. So, so when I graded, these were very large documents, had to be zipped, right? I had a problem downloading it. Couldn't download it. I think that was my confusion. Because when I graded it, I had switched, I had switched, uh, Terrari's and Dawn's numbers. Okay, so when I had, I got my grading done, I sent it to Bill. Bill was culminating all the scores. And then when I saw what the other two scored, I had called, I say, hey, we got a problem. I don't know what the hell those guys were looking at, because, because there's no way that you can score them that way, looking at that. And then we set a meeting up. We, here's my notes on them. I'm going to give you my notes. We set a meeting up. I think it was the Friday after that. And in preparing for the meeting, I realized what I had done, okay? Nick was already in my office. Bill was in my office. We had Tim Sexton on the phone, and I said, ma- it's a short meeting, and I know what I did. I switched the two. I had switched, because I remember scoring them high because of the techdom roofing panels. They're the only ones that even picked up on that. It even mentioned it. And that's when I scored them the highest, and I had it, I had inadvertently given Terrari, uh, Dawn's number. So, at that time, we looked at the score as was submitted. We didn't change it, because Dawn was in the lead, and we didn't want to muck up the waters and change it. But if you did change it, Dawn's way ahead of the lead, and that's why we didn't interview anybody else, because Dawn scored so much higher than the other two. And pretty much, it's the project approach. The most important aspect on the design build was negligible. Didn't even tell us.
Project approaches, in a lot of cases, are done, uh, in in-person interviews. Um, and I'm not saying that they, uh, DeSalvo was scored five on that, okay? So, take that out of the mix. You're talking about past experience with doing the projects that are comparable, okay? Which is the roofing side. And I'm not, I'm not talking about what you can sub out or what you can, you know, push, uh, uh, on a, on a paper company. I'm talking about, uh, projects that you've actually done. There's a laundry list of projects that are, that DeSalvo has.
I will tell you what I told Joe on the phone.
And between that.
Joe, if that was the only criteria, then you'd get every project.
Let me, let me finish.
That's not the only criteria.
And the ability to design and complete, uh, uh, in the construction work as described in the scope above, okay? With that being said, the added extra twenty points on there, I mean, if you're going to say, well, hey, I made a mistake, and we, you know, we're going to switch it around, and, you know, whatever. I'm just saying that Dawn, in her history in construction, she had, for thirty years, they were truck driving, okay? They haven't done construction except for the last five or six years. In that, they've done, uh, military-based, uh, functions in which goals were needed, okay? So, honestly, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, you know, who's, who's a contractor that does work, and who's a paper contractor. And to sit there and actually even have Terrari in there as one of them, as abatement contractors, is, you know, um, I don't, I don't even think that they hold water in, in, in that aspect, so. And that's a union contractor, and it's not about the union or the non-union, but it's about getting the right contractor, the right qualified contractor to do the job. I, you know, I, I would like to see that reviewed, um, and looked over, like I said. I, I think if all them qualifications are done, um, that, you know, um, that was what was presented. A lot of design build, there's requests for companies to come in and give a, uh, a, uh, a presentation.
But you yourself said that is, that is not a requirement. You yourself just said that.
It is not a requirement under what you're, what you guys had out there.
That's right.
But the hundred and twenty points is. That's what it was. You could say that it was combined in there.
It is.
I don't know. It's not. It's literally twenty points. It's twenty points.
It's baked into the questions.
Well, then that point, then, if it was baked in, then the points should have been baked in. It should have been forty points. No, they're not.
They are.
It's a total of a hundred and twenty points per, I'm not going to argue. I disagree.
I didn't give you a hundred and twenty, a hundred, however you do it, it's still a score, scoring criteria. It, it, matter of it's two, hundred, five, whatever the number you want to pick.
They're scored, they're scored at a hundred and, a hundred points right now.
That's right.
The project, the, the one that was eliminated, experience in completing comparable projects for government or private clients. So, if you took that twenty points and you added that, if they were five points off, which I have the portfolio of DeSalvo, and I have the portfolio of what Dawn's saying that she's doing, okay? You take them, you take them two out. If it's five points difference, no, DeSalvo is higher.
So, the question you're, you're contending, okay? If you look at the questions we have on the grading criteria, experience with roofing design and building of similar size, okay? Experience, right? Relevant experience is design, experience, right? Third question, experience in identifying projects' alternatives. That's experi- every one of these is experience. Fourth one, experience. Every one of these has the word experience in them. The only one that doesn't is the fifth one, ability to complete design, okay? It's the only one. So, they all talk about experience, whether it's municipal or Trumbull County projects.
Right.
It's baked in, it's baked into the scoring criteria.
They're, then they should have just had one scoring of zero to a hundred.
Well, under your contention, we would just say, who's got the most experience, you got the job. That's not how we do it.
No, I didn't say that. I'm saying the one that you left out was the number, uh, number five on the thing, experience in completing comparable projects. Experience in completing comparable projects. Not experience with roofing design and building of similar size. Experience with completing comparable projects. Twenty extra points. For projects that are, um, that are bid out, not a design project, but projects that are bid out. Whenever you have a hundred thousand, a hundred twenty thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred thirty thousand, in the ballpark of tens of thousands of dollars, okay? You got one that has five hundred thousand. A lot of times, people go, hey, someone missed something here. Let's, let's look in there a little bit more. You got any, uh, description in here, and, and now you're saying that that might have been the one that was, uh, not, uh, that was flipped, from fifty-five to a hundred. One of the, one of the, uh, individuals listed, a contractor, a contractor is a hundred.
If I corrected, that's the corrected score.
Timothy Sexton was a hundred.
I don't know. I don't know.
And Dawn was a fifty-five.
I mean, you got a hundred here.
We're not talking five points. We're not talking ten points. Talking forty-five points. The letter from DeSalvo.
It doesn't change the score.
Just so everybody has it, because not everybody got this letter. Only the commissioners got this letter.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Yeah, so there is, it's only, you're only talking a two-point difference?
Yeah.
Now, there's another twenty-point question on there.
It'll throw.
And they clearly do show that they've got government experience with a similar-sized thing. I, I gotta tell you, like, I see his point on that, when you're talking twenty points, and they only need to make up two. Uh, a five-point swing, like you said.
The actual number's.
DeSalvo's contract.
The actual number's seven points.
But if you calculate his error in putting his number in the wrong slot.
It's seven points.
Seven points according to this, but then how do you, here, you had eighty here and seventy-eight.
This is, this is the one that's, this is the one, this is the one that's wrong.
Okay.
Okay? This is the one where I made a mistake, and I, and I gave Terrari the wrong number. So, this is the corrected one, because, because DeSalvo's number didn't change. The only two that changed were these two.
Well, maybe we should go back, and we should check with Timothy, Timothy Sexton, and make sure that he didn't make a mistake. Here's the, here's the, here's the letter. I'm going to read that.
I mean, he did, he did rank these guys with a hundred. When you're looking at, uh, there's a difference between the, uh, I mean, between other guys, eighty-five and seventy, that's, that's a pretty big difference. Fifty-five to eighty, these are all somewhat compatible, where the three you were there, but you got, you got a thirty-point swing here, and a twenty-five point swing here.
This, this is a, this is a letter that was written by DeSalvo.
I would look, I would say this. Look, because these are the scores. So, there's, those are my scores. Those are Nick's scores, and those are Tim's scores. So, look, look across, not up and down, because that's, you know, I'd certainly score it lower, because I'm a little critical of the design. Where Nick might not be, maybe looking at something else, you know, and it's how you, it's your, it's your individual taste. Uh, you know, you could see Tim scoring eighty, a hundred, and ninety, so he scored on the high end. Nick's scoring, you know?
So, and what's happening here is, you're, and, and once you do that, and that's fine, that's fine if you take a total of a value, but if you divide it by three, that'll throw off, that, that is like taking your grades in school, a fifty, a seventy-five, and a hundred, and dividing it by three, and you have a seventy-five.
And when you look at it this way too, Mike, you look at it, you got, you got DeSalvo by fifteen points. Nick's got DeSalvo by five points. This guy's got Dawn by ten points over that.
Right.
Um, with one guy, so you, I guess you don't average. One guy could be, like you said, you're, you're grading it probably fairer than anybody.
We, we averaged them, is what we did. We averaged them, right.
Which is another, yeah, yeah, right. And I ain't saying, hey, listen, I ain't, I ain't complaining about, you know, who graded what, where, what they, you know, I, I, there was an extra twenty points in there. I've done research in this, okay? And like I said, I mean, I, I'll go as far as even, uh, some research on the actual company, um, for that or not. Um, but I could, you know, as these things come up, we do our research to find out about these, about these companies. You know, what they've done, what they've not done. If they, if they, uh, actually, um, did the job, or if they actually subbed it out, um, in a situation. And I'll say this, uh, something that always shows up whenever we research a company is whenever they have projects. Whenever they have issues with tax liens. There was issues with tax liens in that. Uh, there was actually one federal tax lien that was thirty-four thousand dollars. Which would be concerning. It is right there. Uh, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty cents. The other ones don't amount, uh, there's, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five state tax liens, uh, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars. Now, I know you guys don't have this information, and nor did I, did you grade it on that information. But, yes, we're the ones that actually go and get that information.
DeSalvo's a great company. No one's saying they're not.
Yeah, no.
We like Terrari. We've used Terrari. As a general, they did our sidewalk project a couple of years ago. They're the ones who come in and, and bailed us out on the board of elections. We hid all that asbestos. This project has asbestos.
Abatement, right.
This project has asbestos.
Exactly, and...
And that's probably why they picked up on it.
And, and they probably...
So, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and in, on a project that Salvo's doing with Farmers National Bank, there is asbestos, okay? I'm not saying that Terrari wouldn't be a sub of, uh, uh, of, uh, DeSalvo. Um, but whenever you get into the size of jobs, the amount of jobs, the pre, the pre-jobs, the, the, I mean, you're talking Warren G. Harding, you're talking about Akron Children's, you're talking about big jobs. Um, you know, multi-million dollar jobs, um, and I know you don't grade it just on who's got the biggest jobs. I get that. But whenever we see the request for qualification, and this, you know, this, like I said, this isn't me. This is, like, this wasn't. I am presenting this on behalf of the Western Reserve Building Trades, because everyone in there said the same thing.
Where do we go from here? We've had, we've had, so the project was awarded. We haven't entered any agreements. Uh, they've been on site, and it looks, and they didn't even provide us with a, a hard-written list of subs, but Boke has been on the roof, so that's, that's a, a, a union contractor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, like I said.
We don't know who's doing the steel. We, we don't know that, do we?
No, they were there.
The CT and Boke was out Friday.
CT was there both Friday with their engineers.
Right.
And they took tags off the girders to see what weight load those could hold. So, hopefully, by the end of this week, or mid, next, they'll have a number or so. That's what they kind of said. So, they went with some equipment, went up in the roof. The roof's hot.
But they're going to go up, they're going to remove that roof in its entirety.
I picture it there.
Yeah, I picture this. This is actually.
Any insurance issue.
This is actually Dawn's. So, that's the underside of the roof. But they're going to remove that roof in its entirety, and, and we're going to use a steel decking. So, so there's a lot of iron work in this. You know, and we don't know who that sub is.
We don't even know if there's going to be extra girders welded to the system.
But not to the extent of the iron work.
No, no.
And then there is, primarily, it's a roof project. There's going to be some iron work, and then there's going to be some roof work, and those are probably the largest two. There is some abatement, but it's not, it, it's not as, as costly as, as those other trades. But I would expect to see a diamond steel or somebody on this job. I don't know.
Oh, no, I, I don't.
I don't know who's doing it. I mean, who else is going to do it, you know?
So...
So, it's going to be a union contractor on those, on those larger...
I understand that. That, that wasn't the discrepancy. The discrepancy was request for qualification. And whenever a qualif- whenever a contractor's clearly not in the same ballpark as another contractor in being qualified. Um, you know, I, I know, uh, Dawn was on, uh, the Higley job for, for the library. They didn't do nothing. They were on there as a goal. That's what I'm talking about. And that's what I was talking about for the, for the county.
Dave Bruce is, is the architect that was in charge from Stolo, Stolo, and, 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 uh, Joe went together. So, Dave was at a, was at a meeting, and he was jabbing me, saying, we gotta, we gotta work on your scoring, Mike. And I says, that's fine, Dave. You work on your RFQs, and I'll work on my scoring.
Yes.
Because they need to work on their RFQ to get better scores, because they need to, they, I don't know who did. Ask Joe this.
Their approach?
Joe, who did it? Did you do it? Did you even look at it before it went out the door?
Probably not.
You know, the girls up front put it together, and they didn't know what the approach was, so they left it blank. And that's what happened.
And I'm not saying that. And that, and that, and that one, and that one got, that one got graded, the way it got graded.
That's right.
It got graded on everybody's leg, God.
Right.
Who's this?
This isn't an attack on you, Mike.
The Sexton here, the one that rated a hundred. Tim Sexton is our criterion architect for this. So, we have to have an architect. He's a registered architect. He's our criterion, he's the one who worked with Bill to put the advertisement together.
He put the advertising together, yes.
And then he would come in on technical issues, to weigh in on the technical issues. So, we had him as part of it, the grading. He would be, he would be there for any, any, any type of preliminary meanings. He would be there. And, and he's just there to advise us in this process, because we don't have a...
So, he would have advised on the advertisement, and then would he advise on the scoring method also?
And I asked him to score, since he's the architect engineer, and then I asked these two gentlemen, and I took my...
So, I guess my, my only big contention on this whole thing, one, I don't want to delay anything any further. We've already heard from the engineer a million times about delaying the process. I don't want to delay this, you know, we don't want to do that. But secondly, I do the thing that jumps out at me out of all of this. If I'm a judge, if I'm trying to be fair, which I'm not a judge, um, if, if there are requests for qualifications at the six, the questions were molded down to five and scored on a hundred instead of one-twenty, I, that point stands out to me more than anything, because I do believe in government work from looking at what he presented here, and I didn't do the research myself. I don't know any of these companies, um...
It's got to be apples and apples.
It's got to be apples and apples. And it, and that twenty extra points that it was said on the advertisement, this is what we're rating you on, I think would have, would have flipped it, very easily would have flipped it. With that question missing, it gave an, an advantage to someone else that may be less qualified, because the ringer in there that would have sealed the deal for the one company, that question wasn't there. How do we back out of that? You know, we, we did ask Bill, uh, Danzo yesterday, what do we do? You know, because the, the thing is, we pull out a one, we rebid it, we bring two in for an interview. The one that we awarded it to, now we're, now we're unrewarding it to them, or they get turned around and trying to sue us, because we didn't follow our own guidelines, or, or they won by us not following the guidelines correctly. Um, you know, we don't want to start a war either, where this has precedent that... Um, you know, we don't want to start a war either, where this has precedent that now from here on in, it isn't win the bid, it's attack the other company and attack their credentials, so that we get the bid, because the other company's less qualified, 'cause we got insider trading information that we know about, that, that the way they do work, that, you know, the stuff that we don't see, uh, when we're, when we're picking bids, I don't want to, I don't want to open the doors for that either, that we're bidding company against company, um, 'cause they do work together a lot, and, and like Mike said, he's gotta work with all these guys. And we got another job coming up next year that we don't know about, and we're gonna ask for all these guys to put in again, and, uh, so we don't want to strain relations there. Being the, the importance of this job, and this isn't just a, a little patch of roof thing, this is to put a whole new roof on, this is a big income thing, this is a, this is a high dollar, it's not multi-million dollar, but it's big enough that I would think all three of those companies want the work. Um, that puts us in a dilemma. So, I think personally, somehow, things gotta be apples, 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 all the way across the board, whether we go back and redo it that way, but I, we need to look at the legal ramifications from, from our legal counsel, Bill Danzo. And if, if, if the roles were reversed, I would think the companies would understand that, whoever owns Dawn, whoever owns Mr. DeSalvo or whatever, they would want it to be fair across the board too, so they know into the future what the game is, and, and that we are that way, that we, we are gonna pair apples to apples to apples. Um, I don't think anybody wants to win on a technicality in something like this, and then lose the reputation or whatever, or have, and I'm sure nobody wants to have their credentials brought into the spotlight either, or as far as, uh, if Dawn was sitting here, I'm sure they would justify every job that you pointed out that they weren't the lead on, or they weren't qualified on, they would probably have a counter to that, they're not here to defend themselves. In the same sense, DeSalvo's not here to defend himself either on, um, the page you were talking about.
I guess, I agree, and I guess the advertisement has to reflect the score, it has to be precise.
In my gut, in my gut feels like there's just something wrong with this, and I think someone's winning on a technicality. And that's just my gut telling me that, and I'm gonna do what's right, and it has nothing to do with your scoring.
No.
You coming in scoring. The one question I got on this more than anything is, why did Tim score a hundred for Dawn? You know, that, that's a question I would, if he was sitting here, that's what I'd like to ask, you know, why, why is that close to perfection a hundred?
Do we have a scoring sheet?
I mean, that's, that's a big score.
I don't have them with me.
Do we have a scoring sheets?
I don't have them with me, I think they have them over here though, I gave them all with the listeners.
There's a scoring sheet that backs that number up.
Yeah, right, I'm sure there is, and that's what I'd like to see, someone is, I, you know, I don't know Mr. Sexton from, you know, this lady.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, uh, uh, but there just seems to be disparity somewhat when, um-
I'm Anita, if you Anita, any.
He's probably last name.
Wrong. B.R.U.M.B.A.U.G.
I believe you have gold, or they said no.
Uh, I live next door to Jock and Lubick. They have tap. Uh, but I totally agree with you, because I have to get a new roof.
And this isn't a personal, it's a disparity.
No, it's not personal, no. I just, I, I'm with Danny, I don't know where we go from here.
You know, like you said, this is, we are in a dilemma, and I, and I think we need to make the dilemma correct, we need to do right, even if we're wrong in the first place, we need to make, do, make it right, I'm not gonna ride-
Well, and definitely make it right into the future.
On a wrong.
I, I wanna talk to, I wanna talk to Bill Danzo and make sure we're doing things correctly legally, you know?
We have to, and I don't want to delay things one single day further, because-
We need-
And this, here's Tim Sexton's scoring sheet.
And DeSalvo's been out on that job as well, it's not like they've not been out on that job.
So, on the first one he gave him?
Previous to this, so they know the game, and they know how important it is.
Twenty, twenty, they're all twenties, yeah, sure.
Forward.
The team, is it, are they out there, they meet me out there, or are they just five, three, or four?
Twenty percent forward, yeah.
He might, uh, they might, uh, it, it might have been someone from Joe's office.
That's Tim's scoring sheet.
He, he, Mike's right, it, it probably wasn't Joe.
I can't remember.
Can he send it to me? Yeah, that's Bill's phone, can you send it to him?
It, it, it probably wasn't Joe, it was probably someone from his office, and stuff like that, and like a-
I'll send you the whole, all three of them, they're all three board, in this page.
You're right, on that one grading point, uh, of his approach, and where he got scored five, you know, that was the way it was graded, 'cause he missed
Right, there is no problem.
bringing some in there.
Right.
But adding on that other twenty. Like I said, and the, the-
Or not factoring in that other twenty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and, and the, and the category that it was.
I hate to say it, but that question there, to me, seems the most appropriate question for who's the man for the job, or woman for the job, is in that question, and I, I'm, no offense, Mike, I know, you, you said, you understand, you're looking at the big picture, your score is still coming out to who's the best for the job.
Yeah, whether you divide it by a hundred, five, or, you know-
And who you had for the job, you know, sells that, you know, you had them fifteen better than Dawn.
You're saying you took that into account, no matter what.
Yeah, spaced into the question.
You know, Nick had them better than that, so we had two to one, he was better than one, yeah.
But you see the, you see how the concern is, you know?
Listen, let me be clear on this, Joe DeSalvo's an excellent contractor.
Uh, and no doubt, no doubt.
I mean, they, they, no doubt.
Yep.
But we're basing upon that.
Right.
Submit or not, I mean.
Well, uh-
I sent it to you too.
Thank you.
I mean, Dawn is probably great at what they do too, but based on that, it's great, but if this isn't a hundred percent factual, which I'm not saying it's not, I'm, I'm using Jimmy's words here, that they may not have been the lead on somewhere, may have appeared to be, that, that they were the lead on some things, but maybe they weren't.
Here's the issue, if we ask Danzo, there's not gonna be a quick turnaround here.
Oh, no.
And then you're, then you're, I, I mean, I, I'm willing to write the opinion today to ask what, what we need to do, but we're also delaying this a little bit, but, um, hopefully-
Right, I just don't wanna ride, I don't, I don't wanna ride in the sunset with a wrong.
Me neither, me neither.
On my conscience, and on, and on, you know?
Me neither.
We just say we gotta do what's right, even if we're wrong, we got egg on our face, we still gotta do what's right every time in this room.
We do, we do, we gotta do it now.
That's right. You know, so, here's something that happens whenever you have a, 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 a price bid, okay? Whenever a price bid comes in, and all the prices are over, or there's a contention in the thing, they throw out all the bid, or ten percent over, right, they throw out all the bid, they have them come back in, they say, "Hey, listen, we had some issues, uh, we want you to come back in," or if there's a piece that they missed, or whatever, they have them come back in, they have them re-present it again, and they go and they take that, that low bid, so-
And a lot of things too.
If the contractors are willing to expedite that, and get that done immediately, I think it would be beneficial for the, for the county as well.
Let me expand on that, 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 you're right on the price, but, so, so what we've done so far with the county is we've awarded the project, that's all we've done.
Right.
And, uh, there's, there's still a lot to go on this.
Right.
You know, there's negotiations as far as the cost.
Right.
You know, we don't have a cost on this yet, we need the cost from, from Dawn at this point. But, but there's, there's points of contention there too, there's, we have not entered an agreement with that.
So, by, by no means there's no agreement.
We're not, yeah, we're not to the agreement, that's right.
And this isn't on a bad, bad, right.
What, what would be the, what would be the issue in bringing these companies back in?
You have to look at your original RFQ ads advertised, if you did not provide yourself a loophole in there, you're gonna put yourself in a legal bind. If there's a loophole in that legal advertisement, that you've reserved the right to, to, uh-
Did we, is that in there?
I don't know, I didn't see it.
Can we know that?
If there's in there, you- I, I would say there's something in there, that, in any, yeah.
But we didn't reject all this, we didn't reject all, we actually awarded it. So, if I'm Dawn, I'm gonna say, "Wait a minute, you owe me for my Friday I went out there, you owe me for the meeting I had with your people, you owe me, you owe me, you owe me." I've incurred costs.
But they've all incurred costs, they've incurred costs in the beginning.
But, but only one got awarded.
And you look at this, you, there's a flip side of, of, of legalities too. This person didn't get the job, okay, so then they want to, not saying that that's gonna be happen, but I was not treated fairly in
Right. Especially now that this is out in public.
in getting, in getting that in there, so, um, not saying that that would happen, I'm just saying that, look at legalities on both sides. I wasn't awarded it properly, because it wasn't graded properly, or whatever, so.
So, maybe the best thing to do is to avoid any of that, throw it out and do it again, and redo it.
Usually when you average anything out, and this is a test score or something, you throw out the to, the top score, you throw out the bottom score, and you average the middle. We, we can't, you, you can't throw out the top one, I mean, we could throw out the top one, throw out the bottom one, the middle one goes a different way. But when you're with three, that's not really fair.
Right.
Like, I mean-
And, and how you-
And I feel like it's terrarium.
And like I said, how you-
But I'm okay with that too, I'm okay with that.
No, no, no.
I'm not, no, no, I mean-
He didn't call. I mean, on the scores, I mean, on the scores, you, you-
If it was Terrari and DeSalvo, and you guys would have awarded to Terrari, I, I still would have thought that was a wrong, because I don't believe that they're the best.
Well, all the bottoms, you're on the top, you don't know.
I'm just telling you, just, my, my history.
I think, if you look at the statements of qualifications without, you know, you did a lot of background research, but I, I think the statements of qualifications, look at those questions, I think most of them, you can arguably say that, with, with the, the exception of transposing, that they were scored accurately, was possibly the exception of that.
Three people indefinitely scored them the same way.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question.
There was a pattern, there was a pattern.
On a, on a situation where a, a, an award happened at the county level, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then they find out, I mean, look, anybody can pack stuff in paper.
Sure.
Whether it's true or not, is a different story. So, I guess the question is, is if you awarded a job even to a bid spec, and then found out that there's a ton of stuff, ton of problems with this contractor, you still have the right to get rid of that contract, you know?
Well, you have to have cause, though.
You have to have cause, right.
So, in, in this case, where's the cause?
The cause would be in the, the grading procedure, that the, that the hundred and twenty points was not-
But we've already, we've already determined that that, that they won that.
Through a five-point criteria.
And, and, and the body, the legislative body acted on it and awarded it. So, that's not cause.
Yeah, based on what we knew at the time we voted on that, at that time, I didn't know it was put out at one twenty and it was reviewed at a hundred. So, that's not my fault or Marlow's fault.
No, I said, I, and I, and you guys said it off your five-point criteria.
So, our vote was based on a mistake.
There wasn't six, if, if you would add a six-point criteria, there would have been other numbers in there.
That's the argument.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a sound one.
And I think our soundest argument is, we advertised one thing, we graded it a different way, shame on us, we need to do it again right.
Think so too.
And, and Mike, I'm not talking, I'm gonna heat on you with this, you know? Honestly, God, we just gotta do what's right.
I just don't know how we're gonna get out of this, we're already, we're up to our waist.
Yeah, we are, we are.
We're either gonna swim, or we're gonna get out, and either way, doesn't-
Hey, I'll take the long way, I, I worked for the county, I worked, you worked for the county, we're on the same team. If we made, you made a mistake, we made a mistake, your mistake is our mistake.
Let, let me-
We voted on it, we did.
And Mike, you, you were right, this is a long process, they still have to come up with a, with a number, okay?
And we want to know who the subs were.
And-
I, I, I hesitate to tell you this, but I will tell you this for transparency purposes. Bill and I went over there and met with him, we stood up, we got up and walked out of the meeting. I says, "Why are we meeting with you? What have you done? You haven't done anything." We went over to their office, we went to Dawn's office.
I don't, I don't agree with you, oh.
We met with Brendan.
They asked for a meet, they asked for a meeting, and we, we assumed, myself and Mike, they handed us a nice portfolio. We thought maybe everything, all the packets would have been together.
Yeah, we're ready to hear, let's, let's go, who, who are your subs?
Since they were waiting.
Who, you know, what's your timeline?
Oh, you mean with this, with this scenario, yeah, I don't even think they're ready.
What- They're not ready.
I don't think, but-
They looked at us like they're in a headlight, go, what, what are we meeting for?
No, and there's a long process, this is not like, gonna be like, hey, next month they're gonna start construction or whatever, I mean, or, well.
Well, we expect construction to start January.
It would be, it would be, it would be, it would be, yeah, it'd be-
And there's no reason we can't have winter construction.
Um, it's, uh, I think you're gonna, I, I think it's gonna be a long, a, a longer process than just actually come done.
I was, in the, in the Friday, when they were doing their study, they said that PBDM roofing material's not a problem, it would be the steel. Steel would be their problem, the corrugated steel, not knowing to lag time on when the steel would be.
I'm not a roofer, and I'm not a steel guy, so I'm not gonna be like, steel, I'm not, that may or may not be right, I don't know.
I, and I don't know either, so they said rubber's diamond dust, they got rubber all the time, it's just the steel. So, where they get their steel from, I don't know.
They're gonna have to use a heavy decking, heavy steel deck, it's gonna be.
Corrugated steel decking. Which that came into play when he was asking if all the material's coming off, 'cause you have two inches of insulation, then you have a gypsum board back on top, which is opposite of what it would be, but, but that's for the nineteen fifty-six roof to adhere to, and that's-
And I would think, that, that meeting with, whether it be Dawn and her architect, or DeSalvo and his architect, or whatever, in saying, "Hey, this is the way we're gonna approach this," would be, you know, in that as well.
Let, let me just say, in, in, in my experience with, with these, is, and this was, you know, years ago with, with, with John Motel, is, is I would score them, and then I'd give them to John, say, "Pick one." That, so there was a, there was a stopgap.
Yeah, but, I know, but that's not good either.
I, I know.
Because that would-
Right, well, because we've got three, but sometimes you end up with ten, and, and, and half of them are from out of town.
Right.
And it's really what, that's really what those questions are.
I mean, it could be good, but-
Well, and right, and like I said, though, and if you have three,
Three local ones, we had three local ones.
You know, let's say you have twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, a hundred percent, your, your average score sucks, you know? So, it, rather than just a total, uh, of, of the scoring across there, but, like I said, I'm not, I'm not with, with who scored, or their scores that they scored on the sheet. There's extra, there's obviously a extra point out there.
And I think somehow, unfortunately, when you're dealing with potentially millions of dollars in a job like this, maybe for the future, only five questions or six questions is even enough. Maybe there needs to be more in there that are sub-questions or whatever, that could be tiebreakers, could be, could be something a little more than that.
Yeah, well, they do like, you know, make sure they have their bonding, and they, and, and so on and so forth.
Sure, I know there's things that comes into that, but-
There's things on there, with, whenever you're a G.C., is, uh, are these, are these lead, are you the lead on these projects? I mean, that's a concern, you know, or were you just added on as a sub and you put your name on a project? Whenever you're doing county, you know, also.
'Cause this is a design build, right?
Right.
It's a design build, so, those things are important when it comes to that.
So, I think that was the request, is to make sure that it was apples to apples to apples, and whenever I talked to Joe, Joe said, "Hey, look, hey, you may come in, I'll come in, this isn't sour grace." And, uh, he's like, he goes through, you know, projects all the time, um, things come up, so and so forth, but, you know, and there's, in that tightly contested, you know, race in there, uh, he feels that he would have had a, a great shot at getting that, with that question. If they were able to do that, he would be more than happy to show up.
I guess that's my train of thought too, we gotta run it by Danzo, but I think we had a hiccup on our end.
Can't have the same hiccup in the future.
We can't have the same hiccup in the future again, that's for sure, but-
If there's something we can do to make this right, not right, but, I'm, I'm not saying anybody was wrong, just if we can make it as clear and detailed on both ends as we possibly can. But there's no, there's nobody pressing ahead saying, you know?
But, but they should have a right to contest or whatever the score, and I, I don't, I don't fault them for doing that. You know, we're not the supreme, this is, it is what it is, we're not giving you an answer.
Do process.
It's, it's our thing, there should be a right, and I think them sending an email, they asked for a review of it, we reviewed here, and I think in this case, DeSalvo was correct, and that, and asking for a review doesn't offend me, it, it just keeps us on our toes to make sure we always do the right thing in the fairest way. And, and I think in here, we didn't do it all in the fairest way, 'cause he does have a, he does have a point compared to the RFQ to what they were scored on, isn't apples to apples, and that's, like you said, shame on us as a whole for that. On the, on us, the scores, the system, the fast practice, whatever.
Well, I, I, I don't think- And it's not calling anybody out, but we all get paperwork to come across our desk, and this isn't the only job in our life. And it's not calling anybody out, but we all get paperwork to come across our desk, and this isn't the only job in our life. But I think whenever you do see something, they go, you know, in, in a lot of cases, and just like Mike, you know, we'll contest to, whenever all the bids are over ten percent, throw them all out, rebid it. Now, is everybody pissed off because their number's out there? Absolutely, absolutely, they are.
And that's not what we did in this case, what we did award it to.
Was that?
We awarded.
I, I understand that, I understand that, on a.
That's a problem. We awarded it because we wanted to fast track.
We, that's part of the thing, we, we were getting pushed from many angles, fast tracking.
Right, right, we want to push this one through.
And.
That's why it's a design build.
And.
We wanna go out, you know, you're gonna go out there, okay, what are you gonna do?
And that's a lesson learned for me, is at least, it, it's fast track or not, we still gotta dot every i, cross every t as we go along with this thing. It's my first experience with this, and it's a good learning experience.
But we don't do many design builds, this is, this is the first one we've done.
Yep.
So, so the reason we're doing this design build, because the work scope is so defined, you know, everyone agrees, you're gonna tear that roof off and replace it. So, so, you know, as a contractor, you know, instead of, instead of going and hiring a consultant to design this thing, put specs together, right? Advertise it, open bids, get the low bid, then work with them to get the project completed. As a contractor, I'm gonna go out there, I'm gonna look at that and go, I can do this, this, and this, and this, I'm gonna work with my, my consultant, which, in, in Joe's case, he's working with Strollo. Which we've all worked together in the valley. And, and, and they're gonna go, you know, this is what I wanna do, the contractor's really driving the bus on his design, with his design consultant, they submit it to us, and it's a streamlined process. And, and it's an at-risk bid, once they give us the number.
Right.
There's no change orders, it's on you.
There is no change orders, yeah, but, and, and that's why they go in, that's why design build tend to be a little bit more meaty than just a, a, a bid out portion, because in, in a normal bid out project, they come back, and they say.
You have to go there for change orders, yeah.
Well, we didn't see this, and we didn't see that, and the next thing you know, they're higher, second or third or, you know, fourth highest on the bid list.
Because of the change orders.
Because of their change orders.
Right.
So the change orders are all, basically, it's gonna be wrapped up in this, in this design build.
Right.
I'd say we should have just bid it.
No, because, yeah, well. Well, for as long as it took, sure, right now, at this point in time, for as long as it took, I mean, we're four months in.
It's gonna take you, but the consultants are busy too.
I know.
You still wouldn't have plans.
No, they, you need, and.
You wouldn't have got plans till beginning of the year.
Well, it works for the contractors, the consultants work for the contractors, they'll make sure that they get it quicker than if they were working two guys.
On a design build, right.
You know, no, no offense, to put this together.
We have another design build coming up right behind this one for the fairground, the four H building is proposed, because Tim Sexton is the criterion architect, Tim Sexton is the fairboards architect. And that's who had designed that building for the four H building, that we can't use his design, because they, you know, it's a little, however they did what they did over there, we can't, we can't use that, we can't hire him. To, to get our, to meet our policies, so we know what the design is, we have a rendering, we know what the building's gonna look like, we know everything about the building, we're gonna put it out of the, the design build. Look, this is what we want, give me a number.
And as you get into these design builds, and you have contractors that, um, or lead contractors on other projects, have contractors that are, have been not in the game as long. They have a tendency to sub, 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 which incurs costs, whenever you have that lead GC, you're gonna be, I think, on a better cost for the, for the county as well.
Well, if there's a, I mean, I, I, I wanna talk to Danzo and see what the legal ramifications are, same time, I wanna make this ready, so. That means doing this all over again, that's what we gotta do.
In all fairness too to everybody, we need to make a decision quicker than later, because I'm sure Dawn and their, their group is working on budgeting their time, budgeting their labor, they, they're putting work into this thing probably every day. So the quicker we either pause it, retract it, um.
Nick, you were gonna say?
Uh, I was gonna say, on, on top of that, the engineer wants a new roof on this building.
Right, right.
I, I, you know.
And then come to our meeting saying he wants.
Well, we're, it, when it says it's delayed, we're gonna tell him his buddy Jimmy delayed the budget.
Yeah.
Call Jimmy Taylor, because we were on track, all was good, until Jimmy Taylor got involved, so deal with Jimmy.
I already, I, I already had to hear about it.
And I think we're okay. Right, so I think we're okay there.
I just, I would say, keep that in mind, because I know our roof is, is an, is an everyday adventure, and we're waiting for a new one, I know he's waiting for a new one, I'm sure he's just as anxious as we are, so.
The difference between his roof and your roof is you have carpet and stuff underneath it, they have concrete under theirs.
At the end of the day, just, I, I say start over, and, and if there's a, if there's a hint, and there is in both of us, of something that was missed, that, that we feel wasn't correct. Um, just start over and let's do the process over again, do it correct, in case of doubt, right?
We, we have to be correct, if we're wrong, we still have to be correct.
Right. Well, we're, you run the risk of, like Jim said, you run the risk of litigation on either way.
Right.
I mean, DeSalvo can turn around and say, well, this wasn't the same, I'm not saying that will, but.
Right.
You run the risk of litigation no matter what.
Assuming legal counsel proposes that, do we wanna abandon the design build, or do you wanna continue with the design build?
I think we can continue with it now.
I would say that, 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 that our design fees are gonna be less than fifty dollars, we could just pick one.
I, I, I.
I think you're gonna get more, I think you're gonna get stuff faster, done faster, with your, uh, with your architects in the design builds.
Design build, yeah.
Than you would, than you would if you, if you went the other way, because if you go the other way, they're gonna sit on this forever, I mean, it, 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 it happens. But whenever you're working for that GC, and you wanna have that relationship with it.
I'm looking at it, I'm, I'm looking at it from Dawn's point of view, you know, they're gonna say, well, you already ordered this, you know what I mean? Where we pull back, we say we're going, I, I don't know, that's a question for Danzo.
If you need anything.
Well, it's gotta be a question that needs answered quickly, like you said.
I don't know, we can head down there, right now.
And if, if anybody would like that, uh, that information that I got from them, projects, that Dawn presented in her portfolio, they can have that as well. Interested, being a lead GC or.
I don't wanna touch some hot kids.
Dawn.
Okay, uh, you want to deal with Danzo, right, you wanna deal with Danzo?
Yeah, I'm there, I'm there.
Looks to me you deal with Danzo, Maro, if you can deal with the young lady here.
Yes. Oh, I can get you guys.
Well, before, before you adjourn, I did get a, a, a text from Julie, um, she's, she emailed out a, a letter of support request, um, that you, that you can either motion from the floor to add to the agenda tomorrow.
No.
Or ratify next week because of a grant request, and it's gonna be need to, to be signed prior to next week's meeting.
Put it on next week. I, I hate these motions from the floor, we get, we get all this stuff, and hell on these, these clerks and the general clerks, we've gotta keep track of all this.
Yeah. Yeah. I just.
Wanna make sure I brought that up.
If it can wait a week, let's, let's, let it.
Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a quick question? Tomorrow, regular meeting on the sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, regular meeting, correct?
Sorry?
The next two, the next two Wednesdays, the thirteenth and the twentieth, regular meeting.
Yes. Yes.
I need to know, I need to know the schedule, I have too many department heads asking me what is the schedule. Between Christmas and New Year's, if we do a regular meeting, it needs to be probably the twenty-eighth.
You're gonna be off Monday, Tuesday, that week, and you're gonna be off Friday then.
And how many, and how many meetings do we have, will we have at that point?
Um, well, I gave you the spreadsheet a couple of weeks ago, but it's gonna be close.
But that would put us at forty-nine?
It's closed.
But we have all those, we have all these workshops that.
We do, and we talked to the prosecutor's office about it, and they said if it was that close, and it came to be an issue, they would argue that the workshops are meeting.
Well, then, that makes it very easy, I would take off the twenty-eighth meeting, so that everybody has that, we never have meetings on Christmas, that week of Christmas, not that I remember, do we, Mike?
Oh.
No.
I would say that this year is unique because of the way the holidays fall, off Monday, Tuesday, for Christmas, and then off Friday for New Year's.
Yeah.
Yes. I think the last time that happened was years ago.
Off Wednesday, Thursday.
No, that, I think you only.
Worked two days that week.
Because you have the reorganization meeting the first week.
We can confirm with our counsel too, on, on that, to make sure, but I think we're covered on that, based on everything he said.
Yeah.
We're covered.
And then the reorg is January second.
Yeah.
That'll be Tuesday the second, and that regular meeting would be the fourth, on Thursday.
When does the, does the reorg by code have to be the first week?
Yes, it has to be the first day.
Hmm.
And then it falls by a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But the meeting would need to be Thursday. Thursday.
So.
Just confirming it, because I'm, I'm getting.
We'll have the reorg on Tuesday, the meeting on Thursday?
Correct.
Why the meeting, why the reorg on Tuesday and the meeting on?
Well, we're off Monday the first.
So there's your regular.
Uh.
The holiday, the, the second has to be the reorg, and it's week.
Oh, I see, you put it in the day back, yeah.
Right.
So no workshop before the reorg?
No.
No, it's just a reorg meeting.
So when do we, when do we need to talk about stuff for the reorg, would that be then?
Most of what goes on is on every year.
It would have to be the twenty, the, the nineteenth?
Yeah, it would have to be that week, if you wanted to bring some up, you know.
Or just like times, things like that, if we're gonna change times, you're gonna do anything like that.
Yeah, sure. We'd like to see what's, what's on that reorg agenda.
Okay, I can, I can give you, I have all three of you one.
I don't want somebody to ask you for that.
By the nineteenth.
Last year, you could look, look it over.
Yes.
And what we say about those meetings, what, what we deem it our meeting, and our reorg holds up, and we can change certain things in there that we wanna change.
Yeah.
And he said CT project, uh, this was a CT, and it was, um.
That's all for me.
Yeah, because I would like to discuss, you know, on the nineteenth, we're having meetings earlier, or anything like that, for the next year.
One other thing, this, um, five hundred K, um, we were talking about earlier for Valley Vision and such.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Who's getting me the language?
Should be Guy Coviella, and.
Okay, so, uh, gonna get it to me today, if not, should I just put it on next Wednesday?
He needs it. If not, put it on next Wednesday, but in the meantime, give him a call today.
Okay, okay.
Right, is there that, so that's Valley Vision, five hundred K, she needs to be able to write that out.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we'll do that for next, we can.
And the prosecutor needs to look at it, just.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe we should, maybe we should.
Probably, next week, next week.
I, uh.
But I'll, I'll still get with him today, I'm gonna get it.
Next week, let's reappoint, I, I would wanna nominate the three reappointments to the planning commission.
The three. Planning commission, obviously.
And have you, have you reviewed the other ones yet?
Uh, we can discuss that at the next workshop if you want, or do we have a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna appoint the three next week, do we wanna, do we wanna put the fourth on there, so they're all at the same time?
Yeah, we can do that, um.
Discuss on the next Tuesday's meeting, or?
Yeah, we'll discuss the Tuesday's meeting, how's that?
Okay. And then that's one we can add, next Tuesday, we can add the, the fourth.
Yeah, we can add that, that's an easy one, because you already have the form.
Right, right, I'll just plug in whatever you, whoever you sign on.
Okay. Okay, and, and then we have to look at Diane also, she's got board seats that are up.
Yes.
And I don't know what we have for those, but she's gonna want those by the end of the year also.
I don't know what we have for those either.
I don't, we, I don't believe we have any yet, but that goes until December twenty-second.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
That's advertised, to receive until December twenty.
I saw, we got, we got, we got something from somebody that already inquired about it though.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I got one from Mr. Wolfster.
Mr. Wolfster, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I think there's ones not reapplying, and the other ones are.
Yes.
So there will be one open seat.
Yes.
Uh, then we still have the one on the, uh, mental health board, yeah, that we need, uh.
And that's an at-large position, that's just anybody, doesn't have to be somebody.
I don't, I can check on that, I can check on that.
The mental health one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was at large.
Okay.
Um, okay, I also, I, I got a text here, while we're still in session here, uh, Bizetta sent us a letter, and they wanted a, asking us for support for an Appalachian community grant. They wanted a letter of support from the commissioners, um, can we do that?
As lo- as long as it doesn't interfere with the funding we're going for, you know, because we're gonna be going for that too.
Yeah.
I don't think we are, Nick, Nick can maybe answer that a little bit better, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
Bizetta's asking us for a letter of support for the Appalachian community grant.
Uh, those are, that grant is due Friday.
Right.
So, I, I mean, if they can give you a template letter.
Does it interfere, does it interfere with anything we're doing?
I don't know what the Bizetta's request is, and I would have, I, I don't know if it's included in the Lakes River that we've already supported.
Right.
Or if it's, I, I don't know what Bizetta's request is, I, I, that's Eastgate is pervert all that information, so.
When do they, when.
Well, I guess if, if it's due Friday.
The grant is due Friday.
I would ask, uh, trustee Hovis, if you're listening, apparently you are, um, submit us that letter, get that letter over to me tonight, and then I can present it tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah.
At the end of the board meeting tomorrow.
Sure.